It's o'clock. And I hereby call this meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order. And if we could have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Gibson.
Ready, salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, and to the nation in which it is founded, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the roll call, please.
Okay, District One Vincent Ring Hayden.
Present.
District Two Richard Way.
Present.
District Three Robert Scalioti.
Present.
District Four Robert Gibson.
Present.
District Five Bobby Thomason.
Present.
All Commissioners are present.
Thank you. Our first item in the business is a, is a nice one, actually. Our, actually, yes, it's a presentation and recognition. And this is for a former Chair Gibson, sitting just to my left here. Specifically to recognize him for his chairmanship. I know we did something similar in December, but that was with regard to his service as a Commissioner, not specific to his chairmanship. So if I could have him join me at the podium. We have a certificate for him. Okay, Chair Gibson. This certificate of recognition is proudly presented to you for your exemplary chairmanship of the San Benito County Planning Commission. Your leadership and unwavering dedication have been crucial in guiding the Commission through numerous complex decisions. Through your steadfast commitment to preserving our cherished agricultural lands from overdevelopment, you've played a pivotal role in maintaining the natural beauty and sustainability of our county. Moreover, your tireless efforts to promote tourism and support small business development have greatly strengthened our local economy. Your vision and stewardship have left a lasting impact on our community, securing a prosperous and balanced future for all of our residents. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very kind words, I appreciate it. And I look forward to my last two years.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is department announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we do not, usually I present any new applications, discretionary permits that come in. And since last month, we haven't received no new discretionary permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is general public comment. This is for public comment on items that are within the purview of the Planning Commission, but are not on tonight's agenda. So this would not be for items that are specifically on tonight's agenda. So if there's any general public comment, either in the chamber or via Zoom, and I apologize because I just realized that I did not ask Stephanie to read the procedures for tonight. So I probably should ask you to do that first.
If you would like to comment, please provide a speaker card to the clerk indicating your name and the item with which you want to speak. Through Zoom, please raise your hand or press the star nine icon. Thank you.
Is there any general public comment on items that are not on the agenda for tonight?
Chair, I see no public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, which consists tonight of the acknowledging the certificate of posting and approving the minutes for the meetings of December 18th, February 19th, and March 5th, some of which had slight corrections that we've all received copies of here at, up on the, the dais. If there's any public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda, this would be a good time to let us know on that.
Chair, would you like me to present the updates to the minutes for the public?
Sure, thank you.
So a minor change for, if it's on C map, could you pull up my screen? Okay, so just a minor change for the December minutes. When I download these from Peak, it's a formal template that's already set up. So it, when we adjusted your names, it downloaded it with the updated names and not the ones from last year. So I just input Celeste Toledo Boca Negra and changed it from Chair to Vice Chair. And then for the minutes from February 19th, we had a request to move up an item. And it, that was not clear in the minutes. So we moved item 9.1, the selection of Chair and Vice Chair, up before item 5.1, which is how we conducted the meeting.
Okay, those were the only changes?
Those were the only changes.
Great. Any public comment on those changes, on those items on the consent agenda? I don't think so.
There is no public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay. Uh, is there a comment from within the Commission on the consent agenda? Is there, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, motion carries five zero, thank you. I'm, I'm changing the order of the items on the agenda tonight. Uh, I'm going to do item 8 dot 3 first. This is the continued item from the meeting, from the last regular meeting, I'm sorry, from the last special meeting, I believe. The reason I'm doing that one first is upon request from the applicant's representative, because the applicant is coming from a long ways away and got a ride down here. And so we want to accommodate them in terms of their time. Plus, I, I think this is going to be a relatively short item, at least I, I hope so. And I know several of us have something to disclose with regard to this item. In terms of, of what I have to disclose, it's that I had a very brief conversation yesterday with Ann Hall, the applicant's representative, just to discuss the fact that she was requesting that it be moved first, and I was willing to accommodate that. And I believe that Commissioner Scalioti wanted to talk about this as well.
Yes, I do. I had a phone conversation with the applicant that she wanted to meet. I did not meet with her, but I did meet with staff to discuss the project. That's all I have, thank you.
I believe Commissioner Thomason wanted to say something.
Yes, Commissioner. Um, I went out to the site to get a better visual than what the map had provided. And I spoke with Ann Hall, and I also spoke with staff regarding this issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else need to say anything before we move on to the, the actual public hearing on this one?
No.
Okay. So in terms of how we generally conduct these things, just to remind the, the public and, and others who might be interested, uh, generally what we do is, you know, the disclosures, if any, the staff presentation, if there is one, questions from the Commission to the staff, applicant presentation, questions from the Commission to the applicant, public comment, Commission deliberation, and then Commission action. So moving on into, into those items, staff presentation?
Okay. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Levis. I am Associate Planner for San Benito County. Uh, this evening I will be presenting PLN 240042, Minor Subdivision at 1401 Orchard Road. This was originally addressed at the March 5th Special Meeting of the Planning Commission. Uh, this is being brought back to address discussion of the placement of the easement. Uh, for reference, uh, this site is approximately seven miles northeast of downtown Hollister. Uh, about a mile to the northeast at the intersection of Fairview Road and Orchard Road. Uh, the project is located in a rural area surrounded by mostly agricultural land uses with some rural housing in the vicinity. The project proposes to subdivide an existing 28.57 acre parcel into three parcels. And parcel one has an existing residence with a shared well for parcel one and two, and with an existing septic. Parcel two has an existing residence and two existing accessory structures. Parcel three is undeveloped agricultural land, and this project proposes no construction at this time. Um, and it is also worth noting that this subdivision changes very little about what entitlements would be allowed, as the zoning already allows nearly the same degree of use without the subdivision. Uh, this image on screen, uh, is the project site facing east between the parcel boundary of parcel one and two, uh, facing towards Diablo Range. This is also pretty close to the site where, um, the proposed easement relocation, uh, would be. And this image shows the existing easement indicated by the, uh, red arrow. Uh, and the yellow arrow is the alternative, uh, going through the middle of essentially parcel one and two. Uh, staff did receive comments from the following agencies. Uh, San Benito County Fire, and they said the new access, as far as fire is concerned, was approved. Uh, the roadway must be minimum 20 feet wide once improvements begin, uh, and water can be established on each parcel or shared, uh, once improved. San Benito County Water District did not have any comments on the new easements. Uh, San Benito County Public Works, uh, said the applicant shall be required to delineate the required 30-foot access road easement. Uh, whether it be inside or in the middle of the property being subdivided, it should be delineated on the tentative map. Uh, whichever location will be decided approved by, as approved by the Planning Commission, the other location shall be deleted to avoid confusion. Um, and then San Benito County Environmental Health had no additional comments on the easement relocation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the staff report, review the attached trash resolution, including findings and conditions of approval. Receive public comment, um, adopt the resolution, including findings and new easement location, uh, to approve Minor Subdivision parcel map PLN 240042, subject to the conditions of approval found in the resolution. And.
Thank you. Questions from the Commission for staff?
I do.
Go for it.
Um, could you bring the map back up, please?
Yep, absolutely.
It says proposed easement.
Oh.
Is that going to be removed?
So I'm just sure, uh, the goal of this was to indicate that that is the easement as it was originally presented. And then the alternative is the one that is in the middle and is for the Commission to decide which one.
Okay, and then the one to the east is also going to be removed?
Right. Correct, so it would be one or the other.
So when this parcel is recorded, those easements will go away?
Uh, yes.
A hundred percent?
Right, except for the easement, um, to the, the east, to the, um, next to the yellow, essentially.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to ask Jonathan, the only easement that'll be left when it's recorded is the alternative easement, if that's what the Commission decides?
It would, it would be the, the new easement as indicated on the map, on the final map, whatever the Commission chooses.
Yeah, whatever the Commission chooses, that's what I said.
Yeah, the, the smaller one in the, in the park order is an ag easement, that's not, uh, wouldn't be an access, a formal access. So it'd just be for tractors to go back and forth, that's the smaller 20-foot closer to the, if you were heading, um, north on the road.
It doesn't say that. It just says it's, it just says it's a 20-acre access easement in favor of parcel three, is all it says. It doesn't say it's an ag easement. So that could be construed later on down the road as 20-foot easement for that parcel to be taken up.
It wouldn't be wide enough to use as access in the future, just, uh, the, we, after our discussions with public works. It would only be able to use for like a tractor to go the back part of the parcel.
Okay, how wide is the new alternative easement going to be then?
That would be 30 foot wide to, to make public work, uh, requirements. I have nothing.
Other questions for staff? Does the applicant wish to say something? Or the applicant's representative?
Good evening, uh, Ann Hall with San Benito Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant is also here tonight. As it regards the proposed location of the easement, it remains the applicant's preference to have the easement where we showed it originally, which would be the 30-foot easement, which is the one of discussion, like Jonathan said. The 20-foot easement's not really, that's not something that could be used for subdivision or anything else, that's just a tractor easement. But the 30-foot easement, um, we were showing, can you put the map back up? Stephanie? Okay. The, along the southern property line, the alternative that has been proposed is in the middle of the property, between the existing homes. They're both, I think staff's review was they're both technically feasible. Fire approved both. But again, the applicant's preference would be for the southern one, rather than putting it so close to the existing homes. On that issue. And then the other things we had discussed last time were condition 24, which is the condition that requires improvements to Orchard Road. We would request that this be waived or deferred. And condition 27, which requires undergrounding of utilities, be waived, given the nature of this subdivision. It is the intent at this point in time to keep the back parcel in ag land. This property shows, I mean, this picture, based on Google Earth, shows an orchard back there, which is no longer there, but there is interest in row crop, um, in, on the property. Do you have any questions of me or of the applicant?
Maybe, maybe it's more of a question for staff. Um, if, if this third parcel, which is currently agriculture, were ever to be developed into something non-agricultural, it would have to come back to us, right? I mean, at that point, we would then be asked to approve the accesses. And I, I guess, I guess I'm wondering why we need to worry about placing the easement?
I can answer that.
Please.
So once the first two parcels are approved, we cannot go back for the third parcel. If they decide to break it up into three more parcels, we can't go back to the first two because they're already done and say, oh, by the way, can we put a road through your property?
Right.
That's why we have to do it now or never.
Right. Right. Okay.
My question to you is, um, do you believe that putting it through the middle would, um, put an undue burden on the applicant?
Putting it through the middle would definitely make it closer to the two existing homes. I mean, it fits, but just barely. There's 100 feet between the homes, and if you put a 30-foot easement in the middle of it, um, the county requirement for setbacks are, uh, 32 feet. So 32, 32, 64 plus another 30, you're at 94 feet. Everything's very tight, but it technically fits. Um, it's just, again, these are easements. So even though, yes, once you subdivide it, um, the access would still be through the parcel. It, there's a potential that could change in the future if needed. But, um, I think the thing to keep in mind is even if there were a subdivision, it's, we're talking about three, three homes. I mean, again, that is not the intent, but if that is the topic of discussion, the future easement, it's limited by the, the zoning to three parcels back there. Not, it's not 100-foot subdivision, you know, 100-home subdivision back there. Um, but the applicant's preference would be for it to be on the south property line as shown. It. I don't, so that is her request, obviously. We're, the Planning Commission has the ability to, to decide as they see fit. But, um, that would be the preference.
And, um, I, I believe we talked about the easement that's already in place, um, on the two sides, uh, that that is a privately, privately controlled use for ag, is that correct?
Are you talking about the 20-foot easement on the north property line?
Yes.
Yes, these, um, both these easements would be privately controlled easements.
So the middle would also be, and then, okay.
As proposed, yes.
I have a question. If they happen to break that up into five-acre parcels back there, how many total dwellings can be placed back there with ADUs and the, and the main homes? How many, how many actual dwellings can be put back there on that 16 acres once they split it up?
With five acres, you can put one home and you can put, I believe, two ADUs. Oh, okay, one home and one ADU.
Okay. So we're talking six, six dwellings back there then, potentially?
Potentially.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, so that, does that conclude the questions from the Commission for the applicant? Okay, great.
So staff had a suggestion, um, which would be to have both easements on the map. And then it gives options in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, it's a thought. I, I don't know that, the, you know, again. I think the concern of the Commission is a future subdivision. I don't know how imminent a concern that is. And, um, having the driveway on the edge would be similar to the property next door, which also has the driveway on that property line. So, but. That's all I, and again, uh,
Excuse me.
For your consideration, 24 and 27. Mm-hmm.
Um, you're referring to north and south when it's actually east and west property lines. And the driveway to the west is on, off of the, off of the parcel line. It's more like about 300 feet in from the property line that the neighbor to the west has. So I don't know where you're getting that they have one right against the property line, it's not there.
Can you go back to the map, Steph, Steph, I'm sorry? I was talking about this driveway here.
No, I don't see that part of it on my map.
Okay, um.
I only see the part that goes around the shop buildings and the house. That's all I see.
So.
And that's about, looking by, it's probably about three tree rows in, by looking at it from here, that I always see. So it's not right on the property line.
This line represents 30 feet off the property line. Which is about 30 feet off the property line would be here. So it'd be, it's within the same space that we would have for a driveway. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, I guess, uh, let's, uh, open public comment then. Is there any public comment on this item in chambers?
I have no public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Or via Zoom, okay. Uh, Commission deliberation.
Okay, I, I fully support removing the, the easement that had the red arrow on the west side and putting it down the middle, because when you're, when you, you can subdivide and then say, well, I have no plans to do anything. Well, then why would you be subdividing and paying the bonds on that? It, it, it doesn't really work in the long run, and we're the Planning Commission, not the Building Commission, so we need to be thinking ahead. And that is why I think putting the easement down the middle, when you have, uh, six, six units at some point, two vehicles per unit, you, you have a little bit of traffic. So why not have all that dust impacted by those that are doing the development and not the farmer next door? That's why I would support eliminating the one on the west and creating a new one down the middle.
I disagree. I, I believe that having that is putting undue responsibility, and, and they can come back and look at that, um, on the, the requister, um. And it, it is tight, it's a tight fit, but having said that, traffic going in, you've got your ag already going up and down that, you've got the one home already going up and down that, and whoever else, you know, lives, and I, I believe that having that in between, just doesn't make any sense to me.
I have one. Please. If in the future, and we got to think about this now for the future, if that fella on the west side decides to take out that orchard, and you have a dirt driveway going from Orchard Road to those parcels back there with a minimum, a minimum of six cars a day, two or three times a day, he's going to have a food safety issue for dust on his crops. Food safety is becoming a very big concern right now. You got to stay back 800 feet already. So if they do that to this man, he, it hamstrings his hands, which is not fair to him. And I wouldn't want to live there and have these cars up and down the road all day long, along my property line, on either side, throwing dust. Just a thought.
Uh, through the Chair, um, if I may, staff has a, another, just for consideration, um, if you could, you could make a prior to recordation and have it recorded on the map that upon further subdivision, the easement must be relocated. So that way you could sort of future-proof it, if you don't feel, if the Commission feels that it's not something that could be done now, or pulling a building permit or any of those things. You could say easement must be relocated, just as options for the Commission to consider.
That, that sounds like an interesting option.
Yeah, but a lot of times that doesn't happen. It, it gets recorded and nobody goes back and digs deep enough, and the next thing you know, there's a mess. It's happened already a couple of times, I've been up here, and oh, that didn't get recorded. Well, why not? Uh, it didn't get signed off. No, that's a bad idea.
And, and the conditions of approval would be recorded on the map, it would be required.
So if it was recorded on the map, I'm just asking, would that be okay if, in the future that they said? What are your thoughts on that? You guys seem to have a lot of experience in this area.
If they decided to subdivide?
No, if they, if you, if you decide to go with what you just said, and write it in, in a way that if they do decide to do something, they would have to do an easement. But you're, but what I understand you're saying is that it gets forgotten, it gets put aside, people forget. But in this case, could that happen? Could it be?
You could make it also, not even that it's subdivision, even if they just pull a building permit for a house for that back, that easement has to be relocated.
They'd be binding in that way.
Correct, so even if they pull a building permit, even if they just want to build a house, a barn, whatever, they, they would have to move that easement immediately.
My only concern, and I, I totally get what you guys are saying, it could be really unfortunate for the person behind there, but it's really tight between, there's not a lot of room.
Don't go 100 miles an hour, would be my thought.
How many feet, how many feet across your street to your house?
A lot more, uh, let's see.
I'm talking to Mr. Ring Hayden, but thank you, because I'm not sure where you live.
Yeah, I, I understand your.
It's not 100 feet.
I, I like your concern for the. I, I like your concern for the future. I think that you guys have an expertise here that's really important. I just wonder how inconvenient that would be for the applicant. But if we have a way to assure that if even a permit gets pulled,
Right.
Then I would feel comfortable with that, but.
Seems like the best of all worlds.
If you have that much faith in the government doing what it should be doing, then you go ahead. I don't have any faith in the government.
I don't either, because I've seen it up here where it was supposed to be recorded and it was not recorded. And I know that this man to the west and even the man to the east, if they decide to do roll crop there because they have the water, with the food safeties and eight-hundred-foot setbacks, if this person puts one horse or one chicken, they gotta back up eight-hundred feet. Why should they back up eight-hundred feet?
But these, these neighbors are going to know from this public meeting. They're going to know that this item has been recorded on this deed. And, and they're going to know that if, if this applicant pulls a building permit, that, that this has been recorded. And they're going to know that they can and should enforce this, even if, even if the applicant for some reason doesn't follow through.
And through the chair, we could additionally have that it has to come back for review. It's not typically done, but we can have it that it has to come back if they pull building permit or subdivision future. Uh, we, we can do that as well so that you guys could have a chance to also further enforce that as well.
Sure, sure.
It's not traditional, but we can do.
Is, my question, Chair, is the neighbor, are either one of the neighbors in chambers?
No, they're on vacation. One's on vacation. He couldn't make it back. He tried, but he couldn't get back in time.
Well.
See your hand up over there.
Please.
So I'm not sure I was fully following the last proposed alternative, but was it to have?
Uh, so the options were that upon pulling a building permit or upon further subdivision, whichever the commission chose, it could, it would force the move into the easement, but it would also have to come back to the commission to essentially approve and check. And it could also be that it is prior to recordation. It would come back to you guys to make sure it's recorded. For, oh, sorry, just for recordation. So that you guys would be assured it's been recorded.
So my opinion is that this is getting overly complicated and now becoming an undue hardship. And frankly, if the neighbors had a concern, they, this is now the second meeting we've been at. That's publicly noticed. They have the ability to write a letter, even if they're not going to be here. I mean, there's a lot of discussion about what's happening on one property that seems to be overriding the concerns of the person who's actually proposing to do something with their property. I mean, this, again, I will state for my client, the desire is to have the easement shown where the red arrow is. And I think if you're going to get too complicated with all the requirements, if you don't want it there, you have the option to put it where the yellow one is. We can't force you to not do that. But I think some of the other alternatives being proposed are getting more complicated than they're worth, frankly. But now I understand better, but thank you for allowing Jonathan to explain it.
Okay. All right, well, maybe, maybe since we seem to be stalled a little bit around where the easement goes, can we briefly discuss the issue of the undergrounding of the utilities and the road improvements? Because we might be able to come to a consensus on those things and then circle back to where the easement goes. Do, do we at least maybe agree with respect to the undergrounding and the road improvements?
That are, that, that they want to strike?
Yeah, they want to strike those things.
That's, that's okay with me.
Are we more or less okay with some of that or?
I'm okay with striking the undergrounding, but not road improvements.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
But I wouldn't strike them.
No, I, I agree with you on.
I can go with, I can go with the, with the undergrounding of the, I can go on with that. Now, road improvements is something else.
Yeah, yeah, the undergrounding I'm okay with. The road improvements, not so much.
I would suggest for twenty-four that any further subdivision triggers, either, either, yeah, either half width or full width. I mean, if they're gonna get three more lots, then that becomes five different lots. And I think there should be some compensation to the, to the county for that in the form of fixing the road in a.
I'd say we go for both sides of the road.
Yeah, full width.
Full width of the road.
If there's more subdivision of that sixteen-acre piece.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, it sounds like we're, we have a consensus maybe on that at least. Okay, so getting back to the, back to the easement.
I just wanted to say one thing. It seemed though that the applicant said that they would prefer it not being there, but they, it's not a break, you know, a deal kind of thing. So Robert and our commissioners over here are adamant that it would be really put the person behind in a bad spot. So I mean, it's, my, my thought honestly is that maybe the Mr. Skagley or Mr. Gibson are just looking out for the neighbors and maybe we should, maybe that's the way I'm leaning. I don't know.
I, I hear you, but I am persuaded by Ms. Hall's point that if the neighbor was that concerned, why didn't they either appear? Well, okay, they couldn't appear. They are on vacation or whatnot. But they certainly could have written the letter. They certainly could have emailed. They certainly could have gotten in touch with us somehow and, you know, written some sort of response that would have represented their interest other than, you know, kind of sending it in third hand. Secondhand, I should say. I don't know.
Has anybody spoken to him? Staff?
I spoke to the neighbor where the proposed easement was. And that was not his preference to have the easement there.
I, I'm sorry, it was?
Not his preference. He, he preferred that the ease, the roadway easement not be along his property line.
He preferred that it be in the center?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we do have confirmation directly from the horse's mouth, so to speak, that he does prefer that it be in the center. Okay. Okay. Well, I guess I'm inclined to agree with you then.
Yeah, and, and I, I think just, anyway, that's, after, after all that we've heard here, I think that that seems to be, that's my thought, that, that easement should be down the center and we should strike the underground. And the road improvement should be enforced.
But deferred.
Or defer.
Deferred until.
Deferred until something, somebody wants to try to pull a permit and develop that.
Deferred until somebody pulls a permit on that new parcel in the back.
Some, somebody subdivides it or pulls a building permit?
Either one, whichever comes first.
Yeah.
If they subdivide it, it goes full width of the road. If it's just one building permit, full width of the road.
Okay.
Is that okay with the guys?
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yep.
Okay, so was that a, was that a, oh, sorry.
Should we, should somebody make a motion? All right, or?
I think you did.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this with the easement down the center. Underground's not necessary, but if it should be, a permit should be pulled, then the, the road improvement should occur at that time.
If I may add a friendly amendment, that also includes future subdivision of that third parcel, the sixteen-acre ag parcel.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Uh, do we need a roll call or shall we just, I just?
It's up to you, Chair.
Okay, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All these, any opposed?
No. So it's a four to one approval?
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, I'm moving on. The next item that I'm going to call is nine point one. And the reason that I'm doing that is because nine point one is an informational presentation about upcoming telecommunications ordinance issues that may have some informational impact upon issues that we'll be considering tonight. They're, they're not going to affect the item that we're considering tonight, but it might be important for us to, to know about these things going forward. So we're gonna look at nine point one and maybe have that in the backs of our minds. And then we'll move on to eight point, whatever it is, eight point, um, eight point one. So moving on to nine point one, please. Jonathan?
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Jonathan Alivis, Associate Planner with San Bernardino County. This evening, I'm going to be discussing potential updates to San Bernardino County's Wireless Communication Facility Standard Ordinance. These, this is to ensure the ordinance aligns with regulations and effectively addresses ongoing challenges. Planning will recommend that the planning commission undertake a thorough update of the Wireless Communications Facility Standards Ordinance. These potential updates are based on current FCC rules and regulations as well as recommendations to resolve recurring challenges that staff has encountered implementing the existing ordinance. The purpose and intent of this recommended update process are to assure that our code aligns and is in compliance with FCC and state regulations. The Federal Communications Commission, FCC, establishes national standards for wireless facilities, particularly regarding radio frequency, RF emissions, deployment timelines, and infrastructure expansion. Our ordinance must align with these regulations while also respecting California laws such as SEQA and Public Utilities Code, which grants telephone corporations the right to construct lines and equipment in the public right-of-way subject to reasonable local regulations. Also, to ensure that our ordinance facilitates safe and effective deployment of wireless infrastructure. While there is ongoing public discussion regarding RF emissions, this ordinance ensures that all facilities adhere to federal safety limits and do not pose risk due to structural failure, inadequate maintenance, or improper sighting. To balance the needs of the community aesthetics with telecommunications, telecommunications infrastructure needs, wireless infrastructure should not disrupt the scenic beauty of San Bernardino County or interfere with the character of residential and historic areas. To protect health, safety, and welfare by providing clear design and operational standards addressing these concerns, we aim to establish a transparent, fair, and efficient process for reviewing applications while considering community concerns on health, safety, and welfare. These suggested changes would apply to all new and existing wireless facilities within the county, including macro towers, which are large telecommunications towers providing broad coverage across large areas, typically located along highways and industrial areas or on hilltops. Small wireless facilities, SWFs, compact, which are compact installations serving smaller areas and placed on existing structures such as streetlights, traffic signals, utility poles, to improve network density, filling in smaller gaps in service. Additionally, the proposed changes will account for associated ground or pole-mounted equipment such as emerging technologies like distributed antenna systems, DAS, ensuring relevancy as telecommunications infrastructure involves, evolves. The next two slides will address our current code's lack of distinguishing between macro towers and small wireless facilities or SWFs. Currently, the county must use the same standards for both larger and smaller facilities, even though they have different purposes and different effects. Instead, the county could account for both types and, and so the planning commission could consider distinct sections and regulations for each. This first is the larger type, the macro towers, which could use the following. Height limits up to a hundred feet in industrial zones, up to eighty-five feet in agricultural zones, up to seventy-five feet in commercial zones. Some setback requirements of five hundred feet from residential areas, a thousand feet from schools, hospitals, and daycare centers. These suggested standards would balance coverage needs with aesthetic and land use considerations. The other type is small wireless facilities, SWFs. The, the other type, these height limits not to exceed fifty feet or extend more than ten feet above the existing structure. Some placement preferences, preferred in industrial and commercial zones, discouraged in residential areas and scenic corridors unless stealth design is employed. Design requirements, SWFs must incorporate stealth designs such as decorative poles or color matching techniques because SWFs are often placed in public right-of-way on telephone poles or other utility structures. For reference, though there are many more variations, clear guidelines could help balance infrastructure needs with public use and safety. Some suggestions on requirements for setbacks. You could have macro towers having a minimum five hundred foot from residences, a minimum thousand feet from sensitive areas. Small wireless facilities, minimum fifty feet from residential structures, minimum two hundred fifty feet from agricultural residences. These setbacks could ensure responsible sighting while maintaining connectivity. Also, when a variance for shorter setbacks is required, we could have additional text in the ordinance for the potential inclusion of further environmental review under SEQA and CPUC law for macro towers wishing to locate less than five hundred feet from residential areas or in the public right-of-way. We could also offer variance for a setback of one-to-one, one-foot setback for each one foot of height, two-to-one, two-feet setback per one foot of height, or even three-to-one if existing criteria is met and based on zoning type. For example, three-to-one in residential areas even when a variance after environmental review, although this could only be for reasons other, and this can only be for reasons other than radio frequency concerns as that would be prohibited under FCC law. Some aesthetic and design standard suggestions. Staff suggests that to maintain community character, the ordinance enforces strict design and aesthetic standards. Stealth design, facilities could integrate into decorative poles or resembling existing structures. Color matching materials could be used. Lighting restrictions, no lighting is allowed unless required by the FAA or for safety purposes. Screening requirements, ground-mounted equipment must be enclosed or hidden behind landscaping. Also, planning commission could regulate and require design elements on a project-by-project basis, provided those design elements are technologically feasible. And if they are not, applicant must provide a letter and potentially presentation stating why they are not feasible. Some compliance and monitoring suggestions. Over time, the current ordinance has become less and less consistent with FCC law. So these are some suggested additions and emphasis to add to our current ordinance to maintain compliance with FCC law. RF compliance, facilities must operate within FCC exposure limits. Annual inspections, routine structural and operational inspections to ensure integrity. Decommissioning requirements, non-operational towers must be removed within a hundred eighty days. And this is some additional notes that are not on the slide, but for staff to just give suggestions. Additionally, staff suggests that the changes include provisions for compliance with the FCC's hundred-and-fifty-day shot clock rules, meaning hundred-and-fifty days maximum from an application to decision, ensuring timely review of wireless facility applications per FCC regulations. This law refers to FCC-established presumptively reasonable periods, referred to as shot clocks for local action, ninety days for co-location requests, and a hundred and fifty days for other requests. These shot clocks apply to small cells and DAS. Additionally, this law points out that local authorities may not regulate sighting based on RF emissions, but may require that facilities comply with FCC RF standards. This suggestion would also be compliant with state law effective since 2016, which allows wireless applicants to claim a deemed granted status for applications subject to FCC shot clocks if the review period expires and all public notices have been provided. This means that if a locality has not taken action, such as approving or denying an application, before receiving the applicant's written notice of a deemed granted status, the applicant is considered approved. Local governments may challenge this determination by seeking judicial review within thirty days. This is some legal foundations of where I'm sort of basing some of these off of. This is just some, not all. But the federal, federal laws, FCC rules, I've corrected that code section, by the way, sorry about that. FCC Rules forty-seven CFR, Section thirty-three, thirty-two governs RF emissions and environmental impacts. The Telecommunication Act of nineteen ninety-six regulates deployment while preserving local zoning authority. Some California laws, California Government Code sixty-five, eight fifty dot six outlines local government authority over wireless infrastructure. AB fifty-seven allows wireless applicants to claim a deemed granted status for applications subject to FCC shot clocks if the review period expires without local action, with governments having thirty days to challenge. SEQA Public Resources Code, Section two-one-zero-zero-zero, ensures environmental considerations in facility silent, citing, and some relevant case laws, twenty nineteen T-Mobile West LLC. and some relevant case laws, 2019 T-Mobile West LLC versus City and County of San Francisco, which upholds local government's right to impose aesthetic requirements on wireless facilities. And some recent FCC orders and legal rulings reinforce the necessity for the county to stay updated on evolving standards and keep the ordinance current through occasional amendments. So in summary, this ordinance, these suggested changes would provide suggestions for structured approach to regulating wireless facilities, would ensure compliance with legal and environmental standards, would aid in protecting community health, safety, and welfare, including aesthetics while supporting technological growth. So suggesting that steps would be to gather public feedback, recommendation for Planning Commission to, for staff to draft updated ordinance, eventually, after public feedback, and feedback from commission and board, of course. And review by Planning Commission Board of Supervisors with public comment provided and revisions to draft ordinances needed, and then eventually final adoption and implementation. And again, the goal of these was just to throw some ideas out there for some things that we could look at in our updates. By no means comprehensive. Any questions, suggestions?
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Not at this time.
Yeah, yes, yes. Public comment on this presentation?
Yes, Chair, I have one public comment through Zoom. Philip, you've been allowed to unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Philip Caranco. I am a regulatory compliance engineer with over 30 years' experience in the field of RF regulations, dealing heavily into wireless compliance to ensure that devices are safe and compliant for consumer use, works companies such as Amazon and Cisco. What I've heard that was previously provided was information regarding aesthetics, rather than the actual information regarding what is deemed safe for the community. We need to make sure that the council's aware, wireless devices are not similar to cellular devices. Cellular devices, which has been kind of talked about here with regards to T-Mobile, have a higher power transmission than wireless devices. Your standard wireless devices are your tablets and your e-readers. Items like that are very limited in power. Cellular towers have twice as much of the power that is generated and transmitted to your devices. The ordinance that we're talking about that was presented, dealing a lot more with the aesthetics. It's not putting into effect also that the regulations change consistently within the FCC regarding SARS, which is the surface area exposure for devices, which constantly change. As technology increases, the FCC changes the regulations constantly. Devices need to make sure that these regulations are upheld consistently. Audits are going to need to be done monthly at the minimum to ensure that the leakage from these towers that are going to be placed in various areas are compliant to the requirements and regulations of exposure. I would more, I would highly recommend the board really take a look at what they want to do with this aesthetics and not focus on just, it looks nice. Take a look at the technology, make sure that you have the right information provided from companies such as T-Mobile, and make sure terminology is correct. These are cellular ordinance that are put in place. Unless, unless the county is going to put in wireless mesh, which is going to allow 2.4 and 5 gig devices to operate constantly like your tablets on wireless, make sure you have the correct terminology. Cellular is different than wireless, and that is the key component here, that you need to make sure your technology terminology is correct, because, because standards are specific to the type of technology that you have operating on your device. And setbacks don't really do a lot. That's, again, aesthetics. So make sure you do your due diligence to ensure that the community is safe, because these companies such as T-Mobile are going to go into smaller communities and try to put towers everywhere and tell you it's going to make it look great, and they're going to mimic what we already have, so you don't see them. But they are a possible potential issue that would have to be done, that we have to deal with. So just do your due diligence.
Thank you, sorry.
Chair, I have no more public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you for the presentation, and I guess, oh, there is an additional public comment in chambers. Can we move back to that?
Please state your name for the record when you reach the podium, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Coombs. Noticed in the presentation you were talking about health, safety, and welfare, and there was height guidelines for the towers. There was nothing about height of towers in residential areas. Why would that be? That'd be the first question. The second is that the macro height limits, the setbacks have been reduced in sensitive areas from 1,500 feet to 1,000 feet. Why would that be? That's my questions.
Those would be questions for staff. These are, these are proposed changes to the ordinances, and nothing has, nothing has been changed at this point. You know, these are things that we're talking about, thinking about. Nothing has been changed, so. But yeah, those are, those are certain questions that we would want to address before making any changes. It looks like we have an additional question from issue, comment from the public.
Hello, my name is Jessica Yala, and that was my husband on the phone that was calling in, and I'd like to add to his comment that if the staff needs help creating ordinance and regulations, that he is willing to give input as an advisory member of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do believe there is no more public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I believe we are moving on to, sorry, I need my glasses back to find the numbers. Item eight point one, which is... I know it's the cell tower, but I want to be able to read the description of it. Here it is. Hold a public hearing and consider adopting a resolution regarding county planning file PLN 240053, conditional use permit. The applicant proposes to construct a new wireless communication facility for a 90-foot-tall monoplane tower as an unmanned wireless facility. Applicant seeks a variance under SBCC 7.11.004H in order to allow the cell tower to be less than the standard 500-foot minimum setback from the nearest residential area under San Bernardino County Code SBCC 7.11.005A, SBC File Number 790. And first thing I want to cover is a slight disclosure on my part. I am always willing to meet with any member of the public on any project or issue, whether it be the applicant, whether it be a proponent of a project, whether it be an opponent of a project. In this case, I heard from Leslie, Leslie Austin, who's a neighbor of mine, not a very close neighbor, but a neighbor in Aromas several days ago. Actually, I was on a cruise at the time, but she did reach out to me, and she had some questions regarding this project. And in any case, I agreed to talk with her in advance of this meeting. A lot of her questions, I did not know the answers to. And in the course of speaking with her, I learned on yesterday morning that the applicant had actually written responses to a lot of the public comments that had been received. And in a lot of those cases, those responses were directly responsive to her questions and the questions of many of her neighbors. I spoke with Sean Cameron, our legal counsel, and he assured me that it would in fact be okay to go ahead and distribute those responses to her, and she could share them as well with her other neighbors who were interested in those responses. So I did in fact do that. And I did in fact have a Zoom meeting with her and her neighbors, and I did tell her that my role was to be an impartial judge here. I'm not advocating in favor of this project. I'm not advocating against this project. The purpose of my being there was to better understand their concerns. Nothing more, nothing less. So that's basically what I did. And having said that, let's move on to the staff presentation, unless anybody else has anything to disclose.
Sure. I just had a brief conversation with Leslie. Was it yesterday or today? I can't remember. It was just asking basically if I received her email, which I hadn't at that time. I have received it since then. Okay. Evening again, Chair and Commissioners. Jonathan Alivis, Associate Planner, and I'm going to present PLN 240053, New Cell Tower Project at 358 Seeley Avenue. We're going to cover location, project description, SEQA, land use consistency, and staff recommendations. So as you can see on the map, the project is located at 358 Seeley Avenue, approximately nine miles northwest of San Juan Batista. The 2.36 acre site is in a rural area situated between existing urban and some agricultural land. This diagram illustrates the proposed 90-foot telecommunications tower. Sorry, dropped the slide, my bad. As you can see on this map, the project site is located at 358 Seeley Ave, approximately nine miles north of San Juan Batista on the 2.36 acre site. And this, as we see here on the, I'm sorry. Sorry, the slides are a little out of order. Sorry about that. Okay, so this is going to, this discusses the new telecommunications tower. I'm not sure why the picture is off, but there should have been a diagram of the tower. Apologize for that. But it would be a 90-foot telecommunications tower with a five-foot lightning rod on top. First, first level would host T-Mobile as the anchor tenant. The next would have 12 eight-foot antennas and six remote radio units. Second level will feature a two-foot microwave dish for T-Mobile. Middle level is reserved for future co-location, and the lowest level will house a police band repeater as required by Condition of Approval 20. There we go. Okay, so this is the site. This is showing the proximity of the site on the site map. 900 feet north of Seeley Avenue, 2,000 feet east from Carpinteria Avenue. And so, let's see here. I'm sorry, I'm a little off on my presentation here, but. So the, the maps here. So, sorry, I'm going to have to jump back and forth here. My apologies for technical difficulties. Additionally, at the base of the tower, there will be a 1,560-foot square lease area enclosed by an eight-foot concrete wall with a chain-link fence and a locked gate for security. It is also worth noting that the applicant has applied for a variance for the 500-foot required setback from the residential area. So the site plan and variance request is going to be, okay. So they, this is the, again, 900 feet north of Seeley Avenue, 2,000 feet east of Carpinteria Avenue, as indicated by the red star for the location of the tower. One of the key issues is the 500-foot setback requirement from residential areas. The proposed site does not meet this requirement, which is why the applicant is requesting a variance. To justify this variance, the applicant must and has demonstrated that the site is essential for maintaining reliable coverage. Efforts were made to find alternative locations. Other sites are not technologically feasible, especially for co-location with existing infrastructure. T-Mobile's summary of alternative site analysis, ASA, for the cell tower at 358 Seeley Avenue, Aromas, California. Their site selection process, T-Mobile's radio frequency RF engineer identified a one-mile search radius as indicated on the image on screen, and to improve 5G and 4G coverage in Aromas, particularly along Coal Road, Carpinteria Road, and San Juan Road. The target antenna tip height for the proposed site is 85 feet to meet service objectives. The search radius was later refined to half a mile along the ridge above Seeley Avenue due to topographic challenges. Some regulatory requirements are San Bernardino County Code SBCC 7.11003B4. This requires a statement explaining site selection and alternatives. The county prioritizes publicly-owned structures, co-location sites, and industrial slash commercial parcels for wireless communication facilities, WCFs. The 500-foot setback from residential areas and 1,500-foot setback from schools pose challenges for the applicant. The applicant requested a variance due to the lack of viable alternative sites that met both technological and regulatory needs. The alternative sites considered: existing towers and non-tower structures, no registered towers were found within one mile. Other structures, including a water tank, were either too low in elevation or too far outside of the service area. New tower development: several sites were evaluated but found unfeasible due to the zoning restrictions, terrain limitations, lack of property owner cooperation, or environmental impact. So the justification for the selected site at 358 Avenue for the applicant is that located along the ridge line, ensuring an obstructed service coverage, meets or exceeds setback requirements except for the 500-foot residential setback, which requires a variance. Natural tree cover provides visual screening, reducing aesthetic impacts, minimal environmental impact, as there is no tree removal or major road construction required, and the property owner is willing to enter into a lease agreement and makes the site feasible. This image on screen is a image of the, again, the cell tower, as we sort of worked on earlier. So the top portion would be where the T-Mobile anchor tenant would be located. It would be followed by the microwave tower for T-Mobile. Middle would be for co-location, and the bottom could be a potential site for a future sheriff's repeater. Okay. And the following images will show the proposed project site as it would be visible from the public right-of-way from Seeley Avenue, and these were provided by the applicant in their simulations as required per some middle. The bottom-left image is the existing site with no tower, and the larger image to the right is the proposed site with the new cell tower. The image shows the proposed project site facing north from Seeley Avenue at the entrance of the private driveway that leads to the project site. The image shows, this image shows the project site facing north from Seeley Avenue, from approximately at 320 Seeley Avenue, with existing image in the bottom-right corner, and the site with the tower in the larger picture on left with close-up. The, this image shows the project site facing north from Seeley Avenue, from 462 Seeley Avenue, with existing image in the bottom-right corner, and the site with the tower in the larger picture on the left with the close-up. This image shows the project site facing north from Seeley Avenue at approximately 231 Seeley Avenue. And this is the image of the proposed project site at 358 Seeley Avenue as it looks currently without the tower. Okay, this image of the current coverage area and gap without the proposed tower, the blue dot indicates where the proposed tower location would be, and the green is reliable coverage that would be, something that would be, coverage that would not, that would be available also, like if you were in a house, not just sort of casually walking through the area. And the blue is, again, the proposed facility, and you can see the gray is no coverage. And this shows the increased coverage with, again, the blue dot being the coverage of from generated by the wireless tower. You can see the increase of the green and yellow areas and the minimizing of the gray gaps. The project site has a general plan designation of Rural Transition, RT. This designation allows rural development as a transition between urban and agricultural uses, typically lacking public infrastructure. It serves as a buffer to protect agricultural lands from urban conversion. Some general plan policies of note that this project is consistent with are PFS 9.1, telecommunications service. This supports the development and expansion of telecommunications infrastructure. This project introduces a new wireless facility, improving connectivity in underserved areas. PFS 9.2, telecommunications access. This ensures all residents and businesses have access to reliable telecommunications services. The proposed tower fills a critical gap in coverage, expanding service availability. PFS 9.3, service reliability. This directs the county to support efforts to enhance telecommunications reliability. This project strengthens network capacity and ensures consistent service, particularly in emergencies. PFS 9.5, telecommunications design. This requires new telecommunications facilities to minimize visual impacts through design. The project incorporates stealth design, appropriate colors, screening, disguising, and landscaping to blend with surroundings. PFS 9.11, which is wireless hotspots. This encourages the expansion of wireless internet access throughout the county. This encourages the expansion of wireless internet access throughout the county. The new facility improves mobile broadband coverage, supporting connectivity for both residents and businesses. The project site's zoning designation is rural transitional, RT. The RT district is intended to provide a buffer of rural development between areas of residential development and agricultural areas in order to minimize the conversion of agricultural lands to urban uses. While the project site is consistent with both its general plan designation and zoning designations, this project does not meet the 500-foot setback requirement from residential areas under 7.11.005. Therefore, the applicant has applied for a variance under county code section 7.11.004H. The applicant meets the criteria for obtaining a variance based on the following: essential location for service. The proposed site is necessary to provide adequate telecommunications coverage and service reliability in the applicant's service area. Good faith efforts for alternative sites. The applicant actively pursued other locations but was unsuccessful due to lack of interest from property owners or land use constraints. A technological infeasibility of co-location. A feasibility study confirmed that there was no existing towers within one-mile radius that could accommodate co-location. And, uh, they have, the applicant does have letters from a facility operator and support, to support the findings. The variance is necessary to ensure reliable service while aligning with county policies and public safety needs. Site constraints and necessity of variance. The proposed site is the only technologically viable location for wireless facility. Uh, due to physical limitations, it is not possible to meet the 500-foot residential setback required under county code 7.11.005. Location of wireless communications facilities. The location was determined based on signal propagation, terrain, and service demand to maximize coverage while minimizing redundancy. Uh, good faith efforts to secure alternative locations. The applicant conducted extensive research and outreach to property owners within a feasible radius. Multiple alternative sites were considered and rejected due to lack of interest from property owners, technological constraints that would result in inadequate service coverage, existing land use conflicts preventing siting on other properties, co-location feasibility and compliance with county code. Under county code 7.11.016D, new freestanding monopoles must demonstrate why co-location within a one-mile radius is not feasible. The applicant conducted the feasibility study within county constraints and which found no existing towers in the areas suitable for co-location. The application, the applicant provided a letter from a facility operator confirming that existing sites cannot accommodate additional antennas. Uh, public health, safety, and welfare benefits. Filling coverage gaps, the tower will improve cellular coverage and enhance emergency communication capabilities. Emergency network support, reliable telecom infrastructure is critical for public safety, particularly in natural disasters or emergencies. General plan consistency, this aligns with the policies emphasizing the need for reliable and accessible telecommunications. Aesthetic and community considerations. The proposed tower adheres to general plan policy, PFS 9.5 telecommunications design. By incorporating stealth design elements to minimize visibility, using compatible colors, screening, and landscaping to blend with the environment, the site's location and design balance the need for service expansion while mitigating aesthetic concerns. Uh, in conclusion, the proposed wireless tower is consistent with San Diego County's general plan and is essential to improving network reliability, telecommunications access, and emergency response capabilities. The variance request is justified due to technical constraints, lack of feasible, uh, alternative locations, and the critical public benefits the project provides. And the SEQA compliance. The project qualifies for a Class III categorical exemption under SEQA, which covers the construction of small new structures. Or, sorry, in this case, it's a macro structure. My apologies. Um, key factors supporting this exemption include: the project is within the 2,500 to 10,000 square foot size limit. It involves, for example, facilities, involves utility extensions and infrastructure improvements, which are common for this exemption project, exempt projects. Staff finds that there is no evidence that any of the exceptions under section 15300.2 that apply or would preclude the use of Class III exemption. Furthermore, under Telecommunication Act of 1996, a jurisdiction is prohibited from considering the environmental effects of RF emissions, including health effects of the proposed wireless site, if the site will operate in compliance with federal regulations, which this project does and has demonstrated by the RF study they submitted in compliance with FCC law. Staff recommends that the Pat, Planning Commission, uh, open public comment, hear and receive public comment, review the staff report, and draft a resolution, including findings of the conditional use permit, CUP, variance, and California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, compliance, adopt the resolution, including its findings, and approve PLN 240053, granting the conditional use permit and variance. Thank you. Any questions? Public comment. Uh, the applicant also has a presentation that we'd like to give.
Questions for staff from the commission?
I have a question that it's probably easy to answer for you. The variance, um, if, does that just mean that I've really tried really hard and I couldn't find another way?
Uh, there's specific criteria in our current code that, uh, the client, the applicant must meet. Uh, and we have to have, we have verified studies. They give us verified letters saying that they couldn't co-locate, that there was no other feasible location, they're technology, technologically infeasible, and they have studies to demonstrate those things, and those are all in the application packet. And I reviewed those ahead of, um, coming to the commission and noted them in my staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions. They might be more for the applicant than for staff. I'm not sure. Um, yeah, I think I'll hold them. I think they might be more appropriate after the applicant's presentation. So I think, I think I'm done with staff for now. Thank you. All right, so I'm told the applicant has a presentation? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
And by the way, for the benefit of the audience, the, the applicant presentation is not limited to three minutes, just FYI.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair, Ray, and Commissioners. My name is Hannah Boris, speaking today on behalf of the applicant, Vertical Bridge. Uh, with me today, I also have Bill Lewis with Assurance Development, whose firm did the site acquisition services for this project. So he's available to answer any questions regarding, uh, the site acquisition portion of the project. Um, on Zoom tonight, we also have Rodrigo De La Rosa with T-Mobile Government Affairs, who's also available to answer any questions you might have directly for T-Mobile. Um, and we also have Chris Kubansky, who is the RF engineer for T-Mobile, who prepared the RF engineering maps and is also available for any technical questions that I can answer this evening. Um, we did receive, we did, um, provide a written response to all of the public comments. Um, I hope you received those, uh, responses, but of course, we're available to walk through any questions that you have. Um, we have a brief presentation this evening. I'll do my best to just skip over anything quickly that staff has already covered. Um, and then, of course, we're available for questions afterward. So again, T-Mobile is proposing a 90-foot wireless communication facility and has proposed a stealth design as a faux tree to blend in with the existing surrounding trees. The service objective, uh, for this facility, um, or the proposed facility meets T-Mobile's service objective by providing in-building wireless coverage and other service improvements to the residential neighborhoods in Oromos, from Coal Road and Carpinteria Road to San Juan Road and the surrounding vicinity. This will improve service in a geographic area not adequately covered by T-Mobile's network. The facility will allow T-Mobile to provide more reliable wireless services and improved access to additional wireless services for the benefits of residents, businesses, visit, visitors, and first responders. And this includes emergency 911 calls throughout the area. And the facility has been designed to support additional wireless providers, reducing the need for additional freestanding facilities in the area in the future. So this slide really just highlights some of the, the data trends which are driving the need for T-Mobile's, um, you know, need for network improvements, um, throughout California, uh, and here in Oromos. So demand for wireless data is expected to grow 20% per year through 2028. 97% of Americans have a cell phone, and 85% of those own a smartphone. 76% of households rely on wireless as their only means of communication. And those numbers trend higher for, um, households with children and house, uh, renting households. 240 million calls are made in the nine-one, to nine-on-one each year, and in many areas, 80% or more are from wireless devices. Um, so these data trends are tracked very closely in year and year, year over year. Uh, we just see these trends continue to increase as more and more Californians are cutting the cord and relying solely on wireless devices as their sole means of communication. Um, so again, this slide, um, is an excerpt from T-Mobile's coverage objective and engineering justification. Um, the view on the left is the existing service provided by surrounding sites. And as you can see, all areas not shaded in green, uh, currently have a gap of reliable in-building service coverage. Uh, the map on the right shows the service improvements with the proposed facility. And the proposed facility will result in a, uh, net increase of new reliable in-building service coverage for approximately 1,500 residents in the area. Um, again, this is the proposed design. A stealth design has been proposed as a monopine to blend with and be screened by the surrounding trees in this densely vegetated area. Um, we've already walked through the photo simulation, so I'll just move through that quickly here. But again, just to demonstrate that from adjacent public rights-of-way, the, uh, facility is either concealed behind existing trees, as shown here, or substantially blends in with the existing tree, uh, surrounding trees. So this view just kind of shows the search ring topography in the area, um, and sort of highlighting some of the challenges, um, that we encountered when, uh, you know, looking to provide service in this area. So as you all are aware, I'm sure the topography surrounding Oromos is comprised of varied, uh, a very varied terrain, including multiple valleys and ridges, making it difficult to provide service coverage to this primarily rural residential area of the county. To achieve T-Mobile's coverage objective of providing improved coverage to Oromos and to the area of Carpinteria Road south towards San Juan Road, it was required to place the site in its current location along the ridge line with unobstructed views towards Oromos and also south on Carpinteria Road. Um, so this sort of walks you through the alternative site analysis that was completed for this, uh, proposed facility. And I'm going to walk you through the same way that your county code requires us to walk through the requirements. Um, so the county code, um, has a preference for co-location on existing facilities. Um, so there were no feasible registered tow, towers within a one-mile radius. The nearest tower is approximately half a mile away and does not meet the coverage objectives, and we'll go through that in additional detail on the next slide. Uh, the next closest tower is two miles away, which is, um, you know, well outside of the search area. Uh, would not meet technical requirements, um, and is well beyond the one-mile radius that the code requires an applicant to assess. There is a water tank located about one mile away, and that's situated on a downslope side of the ridge, also too far outside of the search area, and that's shown here on the map. Um, this area of the community is, you know, primarily rural residential. So the majority of the existing structures are single-story structures or residences. Um, so there's, there's no structures or, you know, no structures that would be able to provide the required height for a rooftop facility. So after co-locations were exhausted, the code then asked us to look at commercial and industrial zones as the next preferred alternative. There are no commercial or industrial zone parcels within or just outside of the search area. There are two commercial parcels just north of Rose Avenue, and the ground elevation in that location is approximately 120 to 140 feet, which is significantly lower than the 519-foot elevation of the proposed location. Um, so that's obviously not feasible because the, the elevation is significantly lower. Uh, the proposed location is the least intrusive alternative within the search area. The entire search ring is zoned, uh, rural residential, rural transition, or rural, which are all equal siting preferences under the county's code. Uh, the stealth design blends with the surrounding landscape. There's no tree removal required, and the project does not result in any significant visual impacts. There's no new road construction required, uh, minor widening required only, which will take place within, uh, the property owner's access road. Um, this is a flag lot, uh, so if you have any questions about that, we, we have additional information, um, that can be provided. Um, as stated by staff, the facility is substantially setback from adjacent right-of-way. So this minimizes, um, public view from public areas as required under the code. The wireless facility complies with all design and development standards for the RT district with the exception of the 500-foot setback requirement. And there's no feasible alternative location that could comply with this 500-foot residential setback requirement within the search area. And we provided additional information regarding that in our response to public comments, um, including an exhibit that shows you the average parcel size and dimension in that area, which demonstrates that there is no other option that would allow us to comply with that 500-foot setback. So this is an, an analysis of the existing Verizon monopine, which is, this is the facility that's about a half-mile away. It's located in Monterey County, near Rea Avenue, across from Seeley Avenue. So the existing monopine here is a 50-foot structure. The ground elevation is 313 feet, so it's approximately 200 feet lower than the proposed location. And as you can see in this map, um, co-locating at this structure would not provide the indoor coverage into Oromos and the surrounding neighborhood. And so the, the areas, um, are circled in red, which would not be covered, which would be covered by the proposed location. Uh, because of this, it was determined that it would not meet T-Mobile's coverage objectives and that it was not a technically viable alternative. And so it was disqualified as a feasible co-location opportunity. The proposed facility will operate in compliance with federal safety standards for RF emissions. The applicant has submitted their required RF safety letter, which is required under the county code. And federal law prams consideration of any and all alleged environmental impacts of RF emissions for facilities operating within federal safety standards. The facility complies with all applicable law. In terms of federal law, the application demonstrates that T-Mobile has a significant gap in service. The proposed location is the least intrusive alternative to fill the significant gap, and the facility will operate in compliance with federal safety standards. Uh, the facility complies with all design and development standards for the RT district except for the 500-foot residential setback. And a variance has been sought to deviate from the 500-foot setback requirement, um, although courts have found similar setbacks to be unenforceable. Um, we went into that in great detail in our response to public comments letter in section one. Um, and of course, I can expand on that if you have further questions. Um, consistent with the recommendations by staff, we also request your approval subject to the conditions of approval. We have requested a modified condition for condition number 13. Um, I'm not sure if that request made it to, to you or not. I have provided a, a printout of that condition, um, that we would appreciate the opportunity to be considered. Um, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions from the commission for the applicant?
Well, I'm, I'm curious with that. Did we get that?
Oh, can I?
Condition 13, did we?
May I, I can print it out? I printed out 10 copies of?
It would be nice to read it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to keep one, if that's okay, just in case you have any questions. So would it be okay if I just expanded a little bit on our request for the condition? The specific amendment to the condition, and then I can answer any questions that you have?
Please.
Okay, so, uh, just to reiterate, uh, the condition that we're requesting so that everybody is aware. Condition number 13 requires a deed restriction stating that the owner and applicant acknowledge, quote-unquote, "potential issues" related to placing a wireless facility within 500 feet of a residence. Um, this is not a codified requirement, so there appears to be no valid legal authority to require it. Um, under California law, conditions of approval must be based on specific legal authority, such as the general plan, the zoning code, or other adopted ordinance. Um, and no such requirement exists in the county code. There also does not appear to be a valid health or safety justification for requiring this condition. Um, if the intent is to address RF emissions concerns, that would be unenforceable under federal law because the applicant demonstrates the application complies with federal safety standards. Um, if the intent of this condition is a disclosure, we have suggested a revised condition for this, for COA number 13, replacing the deed restriction with a notice on title, which provide notice regarding the location of the facility without creating an unnecessary encumbrance on the property. The lease memorandum, um, has already been recorded of account, has already been recorded with the county, providing a public disclosure, making a deed restriction unnecessary. Um, if the county is unable to accept our proposed revision, we don't want to risk delaying a decision this evening. Um, however, as currently drafted, we do believe the condition is, is unenforceable.
Okay, um, it strikes me as premature to be discussing conditions of approval before we've even opened for public comment. We don't know whether we're going to be approving, denying, or continuing at this point. So we'll cross that bridge when, when we come to it, I think. But at least we understand what the issue is. Thanks.
Were there any questions I could answer? Okay, thank you.
Um, let me see, um. Yeah, I think, I think that's it for questions. Um, let's go ahead and open public comment.
Okay, we will move through public comment in chambers first, and then we will move over to our hands on Zoom. When I call your name, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes. We're going to start with Jessica Ayala. We're going to start with Jessica Ayala.
Good evening, and thank you very much. I have a couple of questions on this. The property is foreclosed on, and it will be sold tomorrow morning on the footsteps at 8:00 in the morning. Not sure if you know that. And the, my understanding, this permit leans on the applicant having control of the property. The applicant no longer has control of this property. And this is what the permit is based on. It is the bank. Does the bank have signed off on this? Have they okayed this? That is a question. Moving forward, even if it goes to the Board of Supervisors, the owner would be the bank. So I recommend this be pulled and tabled to next month on the agenda, so there could be a full investigation on the foreclosure and sale of the property. Nobody wants this property unless they're, this tower, unless they're in foreclosure. Nobody has stepped forward. And this tower only serves T-Mobile users. It doesn't serve any other user. And how many T-Mobile users is there in Aromas? That is something that hasn't been discussed. But it's my understanding that this property went delinquent in October of 2024. So that's a very long time. It will be sold tomorrow morning, less than 12 hours. So if you can please consider tabling this and for next month, so there could be a further investigation, so staff could really know and find the, the owners of the property, which the bank would, I would assume, take possession, or maybe there would be a new owner if someone buys it tomorrow. That's all I have to say. I'm really unprepared, but thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Jonah O'Brien?
Good evening. I'm just going to paraphrase what was a much larger document that I've submitted for public comment, but with the time constraints, I'm just going to paraphrase a grievance that I seek amelioration for. I believe it's meritorious. In direct regard to my property, the proposed road widening would alter and undermine the current functionality and create a catastrophic material damage in the form of erosion from water and door chemical runoff.
Jonah, could I ask you to move just a tiny bit closer to the microphone?
Of course. Sorry.
Thank you.
You hear me? Yeah?
Yes, that's much better.
Do I get to recoup my time?
Sure.
Thank you. Due to the current configuration, in other words, grade, elevation, pitch, yaw, the road requires, as it exists, an adjacent elevated land berm of an impermeable material that prevents erosion and contains substantial concentrated downhill runoff to the roadway over an expanse of this abutting roadway stretching 300 linear feet along my property, positioned downhill, my property's downhill. In order to extend, as detailed in the resolution plan, the current configuration of this preventative berm would need to be lowered to meet the current pitch and yaw of the established elevation of a chip-sealed nine-inch section of widened roadway. Furthermore, the main access of my primary driveway entrance to my residence intersects at a comfortable transition from the access roadway, this easement, which I possess a documented easement also. These grades and elevations would be impacted detrimentally and would cause an unreasonable material damage to my property in the current comfortable transmission from access easement to my driveway. To mitigate these elevation pitches and transitions to maintain symbiosis, also equally to control sufficiently the water runoff from damaging my property, a reconfiguration of the entire roadway, I believe, in my, my 30-year construction with Granite and companies that build roads, would have to be re-engineered, stabilized, to, to support sufficiently a roadway intended to be used for not only the construction with nine-ton cement trucks up and down repetitively through the construction process, but also just the, the, the commercial use with heavy commercial vehicles in perpetuity of the life of this tower and the facility. You know, finally, the courts have ruled that those who enjoy use of a property through an easement have a measurable liability in regard to the specific use of the shared road, despite not owning it outright. My property and I would be harmed and suffer further material damage by a burden of costly repairs to, you know, repair erosion fissures and, to, I guess, to mitigate the impact of the use that this facility will incur. I shouldn't be held responsible financially for a damaged roadway that's been hastened to failure. I shouldn't be liable for the repair and, and I guess, held responsible for damages that are incurred. And I guess I seek amelioration for the lack of description and I feel like the lack of planning and observance of the current circumstances and the problems that I'm going to face as an abutting, adjoining property with, I believe, a real grievance in this, in this situation. Thank you for your time and consideration for my grievance.
Thank you.
Leslie Austin?
Good evening, Chairway and Commissioners. Thank you for your careful consideration and leadership. This is not about just adding a cell tower. It's about granting a variance that bypasses zoning protections. That decision would set a precedent that could fundamentally alter Aromas and open the door to future exceptions. Tonight, you'll hear from residents that, that, that they address fire risks, infrastructure strain, property devaluation and alternatives. But at its core, it boils down to this. Does this project serve the public good without causing material harm to the people who live here? The variance would cause material damage. San Benito County's 500-foot setback requirement exists to protect homeowners. The applicant argues that it's too restrictive. It's not. Other jurisdictions, including Watsonville, Contra Costa, and El Dorado, enforce similar setbacks. This is a well-established zoning protection, not an arbitrary rule. But the damage caused by this variance goes beyond proximity. Seventeen eucalyptus trees that once screened this site within the last month have been removed, and more will follow. This site sits in a Tier 2 fire hazard zone. The county's updated fire hazard severity zone maps must be incorporated before approval. They're due to release sometime in March. Governor Newsom's fire resilient policies require local governments to prioritize fire risk reduction when considering new infrastructure. The CPUC's March 13th decision mandates stricter oversight for battery storage in high-risk fire areas, reinforcing the need for stricter review before citing battery backup or fossil fuel generators in Tier 2 fire zones. Property devaluation is real. Studies show cell towers can and do reduce home values, yet the applicant dismisses this as subjective. Courts have ruled that financial harm is a valid reason to deny a variance. The applicant has not proven a unique hardship, a legal requirement for a variance. A variance is not automatic. The law requires proof that no viable alternative exists yet. T-Mobile has not provided independent verification of a significant coverage gap. Their own maps show excellent service in this area. Four of five viable ridgeline locations were dismissed without explanation. Alternative technologies such as DAS and Starlink have not been proposed, though they eliminate the need for a 90-foot tower altogether. We ask you to weigh these two things. Does this tower truly meet?
Thank you, Leslie. Your time is up. Sorry.
Christopher Madruga?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Madruga, San Benito County. I strongly oppose the proposed installation of this very large cellphone tower on the applicant's property. Keep in mind, this setback involves nine homes, nine, not one. Nine homes within the 500-foot area. I've worked tirelessly over the past few, few days with my neighbors to get this, to get as much information as we can. The applicant will argue that the, the, the emissions will remain under the FCC limits, but what will the maximum power density be at full buildout? They haven't supplied that. Your own staff reports states that the tower is designed to accommodate future co-locations. Once the initial oversight diminishes, how much larger will this project get? How much more will the residents have to face? Site selection alternatives. The 500-foot setback in a reply that the applicant gave, they stated that, they say, their own statement said that the applicant states that there are other properties that are larger, but they say the width of the parcels are less than 500 feet. The width of this parcel is less than 500 feet. But they have, have they explored any of these larger locations that the tower could sit on where the setback of a residence, maybe one residence, maybe another building is less than 500, is more than 500 feet instead of nine residences? The opposition to the variance is real. The San Benito County Code in its, in its findings on the variance states that the variance must be followed, must meet the following criteria. It must not materially be detrimental to the public welfare. The project must be compatible with the aesthetics, character, and scale of the surrounding neighbor, neighborhood. A variance in this case is not warranted. The coverage claims are misleading. In the reply to my, my online, the online map that I gave, and I also gave you, the applicant stated the online maps are approximate and anticipated outdoor coverage. But if you see in the yellow right here on the page that I gave you, it states nationwide coverage for 5G extended range is, is coverage with a powerful signal that delivers strong and reliable connection indoors and outdoors. Her response was not, was not honest, in my opinion. I think that all of this should be looked at. I think that I'm requesting that this be tabled until next month, so the, so we have more time than we actually had to, to look into this. And we need to look at the property owner.
Thank you. Your time is up.
We're going to take one more public comment before a short recess for a bathroom break. So Luis Cumbes, thank you.
Good evening, Chairway and Commissioners. Initially, I would like to state that we do not have a wish to stand in the way of technological growth. However, Commissioners, please consider the personal cost to those who will be within 500 feet of this cellphone tower installation, should it proceed. Our property is within 200 feet of the proposed installation site for this tower. And my husband, myself, and our immediate neighbors, who are also within the minimum 500-feet residential setback indicated in the ordinance we've discussed earlier today, are concerned about living in such close proximity to the proposed location of the cellphone tower. The distance in the ordinance was set for a reason, to keep residents safe. And in my opinion, this is a safety issue. This technology is still too new for our society as a whole to truly understand the long-term effects of living near radio frequency and electromagnetic fields. Several peer-reviewed studies have been carried out in Europe, and I brought a couple of them with me and supplied those to you earlier. Being a migraine sufferer and a cancer survivor, I have no wish to be exposed to those kinds of RF and EMF that could exacerbate or even repeat that experience for me. The studies indicate that the effects are detrimental, especially for cumulative exposure. And if installed, this tower will expose us 24/7/365 for how many years? Although I prefer not to bring emotion into my reasoned argument, fundamentally, people purchase houses based on emotion. Should we or our neighbors decide to sell our properties and potential purchasers see how close the cellphone tower is located, it's inevitable that many will be discouraged, resulting in a reduction in property value and saleability of all our properties. It concerns us greatly that the landowner on whose property this will be located, first of all, is in pre-foreclosure, as was mentioned earlier, and has been required to sign a document absolving T-Mobile of any consequences. Yet these consequences reach beyond the landowner to surrounding property owners well within this 500-foot radius, normally recommended for safety in the ordinance. And none of these other homeowners in this radius have been consulted or even informed until now. And it's this late stage in the process which provided us with very, very little time to do any kind of research and offer other options to T-Mobile. We have essentially been kept out of the loop and being given no options in this situation. We appeal to the planning commissioners, consider whether they would appreciate having this cellphone tower so close to their own residence. So please, enforce the existing ordinance mentioned earlier with the requirement that the cellphone towers be located at least 500 feet from dwellings to avoid material harm to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that the county welcomes and appreciates all your comments. I do apologize that we are going to take a quick pause for a biological break. We will be back in about 10 to 15 minutes.
Thank you. Time is now 7:44. We will reconvene at 7:55. Thank you. We're in recess. We're in recess. Yeah, it has, actually. Yeah, it, it was, it was chilly up here. Is it not chilly down there? Oh, no, no, it's not, not the, well, I hope it's not the, you see. No, it, it should be heat.
No, I actually, actually, we have the option with our contract. I can do, I can take my time in overtime, or I can take it as comp time. So basically, we'll do it.
That's what I.
So I just. So that works.
Hi. Yeah. For two more minutes. Okay.
I would like to.
It's a, it's a fine commission, if you want.
Sure.
But as far as we're concerned, like the grading stuff, we're gonna give her.
Sure, yeah.
So, this is just. We said, yeah, I said, no, they just do it. It's like, no, definitely. That doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. I mean, we didn't play, we didn't play the game. Because we have, there's a certain grade and pitch of the road we can do. So there's, there's lots. And I'm gonna, when it's for Steve, Steve's gonna, he has a lot to play. But, uh, but, but I'm gonna say Jim would speak. So. I was gonna go over to a bunch of building companies, county, council.
Okay. Okay, I have 7:55. And I'm calling this, uh, session of the, regular session of the Planning Commission back to order. Thank you. And we are still in public comment on item 8.1, if I'm not mistaken. The cell tower on Sealy Avenue, Sealy Road in Aromas. So, uh, Stephanie, if you could call the next, uh, public commenter?
Okay, moving on through our in-chambers commenters. Vicky Morris, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you, Commissioners, for your opportunity to address this proposal. My name is Vicky Morris. I live at 466 Sealy Avenue. And I also own the residence at the adjacent parcel, 472 Sealy Avenue. Both parcels are within 200 feet of the proposed 90-foot cell tower at 358. The vegetation and eucalyptus trees along this ridge have been systematically thinned for our home fire protection at great expense to us homeowners. More of these hazardous trees are planned for removal. But as a result, the proposed 90-foot cell tower will have no tree screening, contrary to the applicant's claim. That trees will hide it. The 500-foot residential setback exists to protect public spaces and homeowners. And I urge the Commission to deny the waiver of the required 500-foot setback. The applicant claims to have exhausted alternative sites, but the investigation outlined in the staff report is insufficient. Three of the five parcels are at elevations between 120 feet and 280 feet, well below the 500 to 600-foot elevation that the applicant itself states is necessary. Two of the property owners did not respond at all. And one site was near the Aromas Elementary School. Why was that even listed? Additionally, Granite Rock owns hundreds of acres in Aromas, area with multiple and appropriate elevations that meet those setback requirements of 500 feet. They also do not impact homes or children because it is out in the back country. Yet, there is no mention or investigation into these sites. The Commission must require a full and legitimate search for all alternative sites. The Sealy Avenue Ridge extends to Coal Road, where the applicant considered a water storage tank, but rejected it due to its distance. However, there is another Aromas Water District Public Storage Tank in the same ridge at the elevation of over 600 feet. And it's much closer. This was not evaluated. Furthermore, neither I, nor my neighbors, or my eastern neighbors at 464, 468, or 478, were contacted as potential sites. This suggests an opportunistic decision rather than a thorough, good-faith search. For these reasons, I strongly urge the Commissioners to deny the variance of the project. Thank you.
David Coombs?
Good evening, hello again. So we talked about the coverage map earlier. Um, if you go to the website and look at the T-Mobile coverage map, there's no areas that doesn't have 5G in any way, shape, or form. Not even 4G. It's all 5G coverage, either, uh, it has, uh, 5G ultra-capacity. Uh, the second highest level is 5G extended range, but the majority is, uh, is shown as 5G ultra-capacity. We live in one of the areas shown on the map earlier by the applicant as having no service. Uh, we have T-Mobile, I have three bars, right in the middle of an area that has no service. So I tend to doubt some of the data that's being shown to you so far. Um, other options. Uh, satellite service was mentioned earlier. Uh, T-Mobile has a Starlink contract. It's called direct-to-cell service, uh, satellite service, not mentioned at all as part of some of the alternatives. Um, antenna search shows there's 34 towers within a three-mile radius, but apparently, none of those are, are okay. So that's a bit of a mystery. Distributed antenna systems, uh, DAS, been in use for some time. Uh, this approach splits the transmitted power amongst several antenna elements, separated in space so it applied coverage over the same area, but with reduced power at any of the individual antenna sites. Single antenna radiating at high power is replaced by a group of low-power antennas covering the same area. Um, so if alternative methods do exist, and they do, there's the technology there, um, why does a, why do we need a waiver for 500-foot in a residential area? Why is it even being considered, uh, next to nine dwellings that are all within the 500 feet? Um, I'm one of the ones that's within 200 feet. I don't mind a shower there. So, from everything that we see, I, I don't see a demonstrable need for, for the tower to be in the area they're proposing. I don't see a need for a waiver. Um, this is, I know we're not allowed to talk about RF impacts to humans, uh, because it's apparently, it's not an FCC thing. But, again, as, uh, was mentioned earlier, it exacerbate, exacerbates existing conditions. It can exacerbate other conditions. There's a European Parliament health impact of 5G that's been ongoing for some time. That report, you know, the, the phrase they use there, uh, probably causes cancer. And in particular, gliomas and acoustic neuromas in humans. Um, also reproductive and development effects. These frequency clearly affect male fertility. These frequency possibly affect female fertility. They possibly have adverse effects on the development of embryos, newborns. So, when you look at the people within the 200 and the 500 thing, if you have relatives that come and visit you, do you want them staying that level of exposure? Um, but no, basically, the, there is existing technology that could replace this tower. There is no need for it. There's no need for a waiver. Uh, with that, I would strongly suggest that you deny this application. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna apologize in advance. I think this says Wayne Norton?
Uh, Commissioner Wayne, Commissioners, uh, thank you, uh, for this opportunity. Um, I wanted to try, try to, without repeating some of the things that you are heard, just sort of highlight a couple of things. One is that the property being under foreclosure is a material issue that you need to, that we need to consider. Uh, if that property is sold tomorrow, it means whatever agreements that the owner made now falls upon whoever the new owner is. And if she held harmless T-Mobile, that, the, the, the property, the value of that property is gonna plummet like a rock off the wharf in Santa Cruz. Um, it's gonna make it really difficult, which for us neighbors who have to put up with that, means that that, that land is gonna be vacant for a while. We live in a tier-two fire zone. Who's gonna maintain the brush? Who's gonna clear the brush? Who's gonna make sure that the road is maintained? All of that work would fall on the property owner. And if that property is sitting there vacant for a while because they can't sell it now at, at auction, that's gonna be an issue for all of us as material, um, impact on our property and our property's value. I also want to reiterate that the neighbors, uh, for all the last three years, a lot of the neighbors have been, uh, working on cutting down eucalyptus, which are the primary shield, the camouflage for this, for this cell tower. We've spent, as neighbors personally, about 50 mil, 50 million, I wish I had 50 million, $50,000 over the last three years to cut down, uh, eucalyptus. Because in Aromas, we've had two fires in the last couple of years, both involving eucalyptus. One was eucalyptus trees going tree top to tree top to tree top. And if the wind had changed, we would have lost our community. Um, so eucalyptus trees are a really bad idea for screening. In fact, we want to cut more down. We don't want them to be a camouflage. We're, we're trying desperately to work with our neighbors to cut even more down. Um, and lastly, I think, I just want to remind you about the community benefit here. Uh, last June, the California, uh, Public Utilities Commission, um, awarded South Valley Internet a $30 million grant to extend, uh, fiber and broadband to Aromas. Those plans are in work, some plans have been drawn up. Uh, South Valley Internet has worked with the San Juan Batista Rordi Club, with that committee that I'm chairman of, to make sure that, uh, kids who are, uh, needy, who will get free and reduced lunch at school, those families will get free broadband, high-speed, high-quality broadband in Aromas. We don't need, uh, cell tower. T-Mobile is looking out for T-Mobile. They're not looking out for the community. I, I hope that you deny the variance request. Thank you.
And Nan Madruga? Nan?
Good evening and thank you for listening to us. My name is Nan Madruga in San Benito County. Next month will be 50 years that I've lived on this hill. My mom and dad were there first. I grew up there. I raised my children there. We are raising our grandchildren there. The only way I'm leaving that hill is boots first. We enjoy this area of oak meadows and avocado orchards, while the applicant has chosen to live near the proposed tower that should not outweigh our right to preserve the peaceful beauty of our home. The tower's impact on our property and wildlife is concerning. We frequently see deer, coyote, and wild turkeys, and cellphone towers can disrupt their habitat. This tower cannot be hidden. It will be visible from every angle, including when stepping out of my door and driving up our hill. What I found really interesting in their photos, I took a picture and I didn't get time to get it in. If you take that same picture from a different angle, you see our homes. You didn't see any homes in those photos. That was not accidental, I'm sure. There's, um, a licensed daycare right at the bottom of our driveway. I have two little grandsons growing up on that hill. One of them is autistic and is non-verbal. I can't, I can't lie and say that this doesn't bother me and wonder how this is gonna affect him as the years go by. I want to be able to look in his eyes and tell him that I didn't have all the facts. I didn't have all the numbers. I didn't have time. And I don't have what it takes to speak so eloquently like my neighbors do. But I want to be able to look those little boys in the eye and tell them that I came up here and said my piece for them. The drive to our home has always invoked peace and respite from the outside world. I can't imagine being greeted by this unsightly 90-foot tower. I want to be able to tell neighbors that come to see us, turn left when you see the black mailboxes, not turn left when you see the tower sticking up at the top of the hill. I know that your decisions aren't based on emotion, but that's all I have to give to you right now. I do ask, there's a lot of confusion. We don't, as neighbors, know who actually owns this property right now. But we know that the neighbor that we have who has owned it, I'm not even sure she can help keep up with her end of all of this as far as maintaining the land and everything. And there's just so many uncertainties here. We ask that, at the very least, you please give this one month. Give us another month to have all of us inspect this. Thank you.
And moving over to Zoom, Philip, you've been allowed to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of what has been said by the community, and I'm really thankful that they came out and discussed their concerns. Wanted to just highlight some of the issues that have been discussed, which is respect to the property owner, which is undecided at this time. As stated earlier, that the owner is in foreclosure, so that the bank is actually the owners of this property. So the permit is not in the right name. And the board, as everyone has stated, and I really highly recommend it, should table this till next month until to see who is actually the property owner to needs to file the permits. We also need to get more information regarding other items such as seismic events. We're going to put up this huge tower onto this property. Seismic has never been discussed. The impact to our grid has not been discussed regarding the power to these antennas. And as stated earlier from others, that this is specifically just for T-Mobile. How was that benefiting our community? I'm very sure if you did a survey within the community of Aromas, not a lot of people use T-Mobile. They, so we need to get all the information provided from the community to determine if this is the viable solution. Please consider everyone's comments and understand that there is a huge impact. Roadway absolutely needs to be done. There's going to be maintenance on those antennas. They're not telling you how much maintenance needs to be done on the antennas over a period of time. They're connected by coaxial cables. There's going to have condensation on those cables. How much maintenance needs to be done? What is the routine of them going up and down the road for maintenance that's going to cause the impact? We need to have more information, more viable information, not just that it's great for T-Mobile, because that's what has been said. Also, that kind of got glanced over was the fact that not a lot of the other community, I'm sorry, the landowners wanted this on their property. It's only a landowner who is in foreclosure that said this is a great spot for them. Please understand that this is not wanted in the community. This is not the only location. This benefits only T-Mobile. And that was very clearly highlighted in the presentation by T-Mobile, that this is to benefit their coverage for their customers. Again, who are their customers? Pretty sure in Aromas, it's a very small amount of people. I'm not a T-Mobile subscriber. So please get more information. Table this decision until the board has everything that's being done. Technology is going to be there, absolutely. We cannot get away from technology. That's going to happen. We all know that everything's going wireless. No one has landlines anymore. But we need to ensure that this is just not to benefit a large corporation and needs to benefit our community. What is the benefit to our community with this cell tower going up? It's only T-Mobile. Yes, they'll state that they have to put a police ban on it. That's required from every cellular service that's going up.
Thank you, Philip. Through Zoom, Raina, you've been allowed to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good, perfect. Thank you. I really want to reiterate what everybody is saying, so I won't, I'll just say something short, I hope. I hope you will oppose this application. It's very near our family home on Seeley. The proposal is too huge with the 90 feet and the antennas, the radio units, the microwave dish. Please change the location or look into more dispersed units. I'm very concerned about the health effects of the radiation. I've spent hours at the university library at UC Davis with the help of a reference librarian researching Wi-Fi cell radiation health risks in medical journals. The risks to health are well documented. Also, as this becomes more widely known, even if you can't enforce that RF limit, given the appearance, the size, and the health effects that will become more widely known, it will affect our property values, and that is something to consider. A neighbor was unable to come and ask me to share her concerns as well. Also, they shouldn't get exemptions for the existing code of the 500-foot setback. If RF safety can't be a consideration, if they say it's within the standards, those standards assume that all is done legally, including the 500-foot setback. So without that, we can't talk about safety because it's not legal as it's proposed. So please reject this proposal. Thank you so much.
Okay, and Juan Vasquez, you've been unmuted.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, yes. I'm very concerned with regards to this project being developed. We are the owners of a daycare, which is roughly within the 900 feet of the proposed area for the site building. I'm really concerned with health issues that this might bring to the kids that we have service for. Their parents are having an issue and concern, and we're afraid that this concern might turn away parents from bringing their kids to our daycare, therefore affecting our income. And also, the kids that do decide, or parents that decide to bring in their children have to risk their health, will have health issues. And we are really concerned with that. So we, as a family who operate the daycare, strongly oppose this. So we urge you to deny this permit. Thank you for listening.
Okay, and through Zoom, Joseph, you've been unmuted. Joseph, it's very low. Can you check your microphone?
Yes, is this better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. My name is Joseph Becker. I live on the other side of the ridge on Carr Avenue. I'm here to oppose the cellphone tower permit and also the, you know, one dude that's very close to my house, with or without the variance. A cellphone tower this close to everybody creates a material fact that will need to be disclosed to potential buyers of our homes. We can't discuss the health factors, but as we can all agree, it will turn away some number of homeowners, which will reduce the potential sale price of our homes in the future. I think the need for this tower is questionable at best. Carr Avenue and Seeley Avenue both have high-speed internet and adequate cellphone coverage. In fact, T-Mobile's website advertises 100% 5G, 4G coverage on Carr, Seeley, Snyder, Cole Road, Carpenteria, San Juan Road. So I'd ask this question, is the T-Mobile website falsely advertising this? Or is the assurance development company proposal and the radio frequency engineers of T-Mobile disrepresenting the coverage map provided in attachment F? Again, the 500, the county, and some other items that people already covered, there are three homes on Carr Avenue within the 500-foot radius of this site, six homes on Seeley Avenue, so 10 total. There is a daycare, a preschool, less than 1,000 feet from this site, which if these sites are not allowed within 1,500 feet of a school, it shouldn't be allowed within 1,000 feet of a daycare or preschool. The 500-foot setback exists for a reason, to protect residents from approaching infrastructure. The setback should not be waived unless all the affected property owners approve. It urges the planning commission to uphold its own zoning laws to consider the real impact on our community and the adjacent property values and reject the variance request. I appreciate your time, and it was great to hear from all of our other neighbors. Thank you.
Chair, I have no more public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. I am informed that the applicant wishes to address some of the public comments that they heard tonight, which seems fair, given that they also had the opportunity to address the public comments that were provided in written form. So I'll allow a brief rebuttal to the public comments that were heard in chambers and via Zoom. So if you wish to do so, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep my comments focused on things we did not address in our written public comments. So just in regards to the site control and lease rights, our understanding is that sale has been postponed to 4-3, and the applicants hold a valid and enforceable lease agreement for the site. And there are no outstanding issues that would affect the commission's ability to consider the permit. Vertical Bridge is working with the property owner to find a solution there. And I just want to make a brief note about the 500-foot setback requirement, or excuse me, the variance required. This is not setting a new precedent. The county approved a variance last year to Vertical Bridge to deviate from the 500-foot setback requirement. And in our response to comment letter, we went into the legal arguments regarding why we believe that 500 and 150-foot setbacks are unenforceable. And then we just wanted to briefly touch upon the comments regarding the road concerns or questions. So the access road is part of the subject property with a recorded easement, allowing the other law owners to use it. The recorded plaque confirms these access rights. There's no record of a separate recorded maintenance agreement that we could find in the recorded documents that would impose additional obligations on the property owner. The planned road expansion and all widening will occur entirely within the property owner's legally owned parcels and will not extend beyond the established parcel boundary. The expansion is solely intended to meet county requirements and will not interfere with any of the neighboring properties or their existing easement rights. While we do not believe a performance bond is necessary, given the lack of a recorded maintenance agreement, we're open to considering one as a condition of approval if a formal obligation is identified, subject to the terms and conditions of that maintenance agreement. And, you know, as a note, as through the building permit process, any road widening will be required to comply. You know, with county grading and erosion control measures will be reviewed by Public Works. It must comply with the building code requirements. All the other comments, I believe, we have responded to in writing. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on, I guess, to discussion and deliberation. I guess I need to declare public comment closed. Okay, public comment is closed. Moving on to discussion and deliberation within the commission, I guess, you know, driving a stake into the ground on my part, I would have to state for the record that, number one, I do not need to recuse myself from this, even though I do live in Aromas. I do not live within the 300, or I believe it's 300-foot boundary where I would need to recuse myself or not participate. Obviously, I don't live within that boundary. I would, or I would have already been violating the need to recuse myself. But I did verify that with Abraham and the GIS data already. I am by no means prepared to approve this tonight. If I'm forced to make a vote on this tonight, it would be a vote to deny. My personal opinion on this would be, even though the, even though the sale of the property is not going to happen apparently until April 3rd, that would still be before our next meeting. And it still seems to me like a deferral, a continuance until the April meeting would probably give us time to find out who the owner is going to be. And that seems like by then, we would get more clarity around the fire requirements that are going to be coming out of Governor Newsom's office as well. So that would probably be my preference, but obviously, others may disagree. So that's my opinion, and just wondering what the rest of the commission is thinking.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Way. I think we should find out exactly who's going to own that property, just in case that person who buys it doesn't want a cell tower. And if they do, then we'll continue. But it would be hard for a sale, at least when I buy property. I don't want any encumbrances on it. I want to make it clean. I don't want to lease from somebody else when it goes forward that I have to assume. So I think we should at least continue it until we know who owns the property, physically owns the property. Thank you.
I would agree that we need to know who owns that property and move forward from then so we can continue until our April meeting.
Let's say one more thing real quick. And I don't mean the bank. I mean, we want to know physically who owns the property. If it sits in the bank's hands for a year, so be it.
Yeah, I would just say that I agree with you completely. I mean, that sale may not happen. Who's going to buy property with a big cell tower? I mean, I have some concerns with the variance as well. So, I mean, if you want to table this so we can get some more information, that'd be...
On the other hand, if it's crystal clear that we should deny it, then we should just flat out do that.
Well, it's of my personal opinion that I couldn't support this. I would deny it.
I would as well.
I would deny it also.
So...
Well, is there a motion to deny?
I so move that the...
Sorry. Before we get a motion, I would just like to suggest that if you do do a denial, I would bring it back with findings.
Oh, yes, findings for denial, yes, absolutely. Thank you. That's an important procedural point, yes. We've been there before, yes.
I'm new, so thank you so much. So...
We would bring it back to the next regular meeting with findings for denial.
So the findings would include, would that be...
So there were findings made in the resolution. And so you could make a finding of public health, safety, welfare. You could make a finding of that, you know, variance unjustified for X reason, any of the reasons that I stated in the resolution. So there's several, or you could say, you know, incompatible with general plan. Those kind of things are reasons you could make findings. So it sounds like maybe public health, safety, welfare is what the commission would like to make finding on.
And I just am concerned about the nine homes within 500 feet. And, you know, we don't know, we know a lot. I think that it's not good to have a bunch of EMFs and RFs near us, on top of us.
So...
So safety would be, I think, a good...
Okay.
I would prefer to also include the lack of a documented good faith effort to find an alternative site. I don't believe that the... I don't believe that what's included in the report is adequate to indicate that a good faith effort was made.
So you would like to also include that it does not meet the qualifications for finding two good faith efforts were made to secure other locations, and no other site was technologically feasible, and no co-location was possible?
Exactly, exactly, yes.
I would just say this might be a little messy, so we're going to have to... Whoever makes the motion will end up having to go back and incorporate the comments. I would add that the daycare is supposedly within 900...
Yes.
Feet. I'll add that.
Yes.
Through the chair, I can repeat all of your comments when you're ready to make a motion.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I also had concerns about the aesthetics. I mean, I would, myself, would love to go out. I mean, obviously, if it gets denied tonight, there's no need to go out. But I was curious to see what it actually looks like on the ground, especially if trees have been removed, and how close the tower would have been to the house that was on the property. The applicant says that it's unnecessary to have a 500-foot setback, but what is necessary? And how far was it, would it be from that house that's on the property? I mean, I had a lot of questions that may not be needed now. Federal safety standards, it'd be good to have that in our back pocket next time we have a cell tower come at us. I also had concerns about the roadway and bringing those, as the gentleman stated, the concrete trucks up there. And there is no maintenance agreement, so then we're going to, just like we do with housing developments, they destroy public roads, and then the taxpayers get to foot the bill. In this case, I guess there is a public road to that point. Well, they'll destroy it, and then the neighbors all get to pay for the road going up the hill with all the way to the...
And Seeley was just repaved, like not more than a couple of months ago.
Yeah, and I don't like the monopoles to begin with. I think they're hideous. And then if the trees were to die, and there's this fake tree now that's sitting up there and it doesn't blend in with everybody. I haven't been up there. I don't go to Aromas very often. Sorry, folks. I don't have cell coverage because I have T-Mobile. I would just like to see what it would have looked like if we were to continue it. Yeah, there's some other conditions, but if we're going to deny it, I guess it's a moot at this point. So just to be clear, we're going to commission fines that it would be denied based on inconsistency with finding two of the use permit findings and finding two for the wireless communication facility standards variance findings, which is public health, safety, welfare, and as well as that no good faith efforts were made to secure other locations. Is that correct?
Insufficient, insufficient good faith efforts. I wouldn't say no efforts, but insufficient efforts.
Insufficient, okay, perfect.
Chair, could we continue it and then bring the findings for denial back at the next meeting and then make a motion on that?
If that's your recommendation, yes.
I would, based on this discussion.
I'm not going to go against county council recommendation, of course.
That's, I think.
And we're going to continue that, continue that to a date certain of April 16th or?
Yes. Yes. Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Before we do that, can we make sure we know what sort of the general findings are before, so that when we bring it back, we know sort of what we're itemizing in that sense, yeah.
Okay, so and so through the chair. Based on inconsistency in the use permit findings, specifically finding two that the for which is the purpose, proposed use will not have adverse public health, safety or general welfare community that there is or not determined. Or so you're saying that they are basically essentially indeterminate findings per the commission. And per the wireless communication facility standard for variance findings, that you're also saying that insufficient good faith efforts were made to secure other locations. And as well as other co-location or site feasibility, technological feasibility. Am I correct?
Yes.
And the daycare.
Yep.
And that'll be covered under public health, safety, welfare.
Yes, I think I think you've captured it.
Okay, and it's continued to a date certain of August 16th, regular scheduled planning commission meeting. April, April 16th, sorry, April 16th, my bad. Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to that effect, right?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving, please, no applause, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 8.2. And item 8.2 is, sorry, I need to go back through these loose leaf pages, which are my own fault. 8.2 Resource Management Agency Hold a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution to approve PLN 210047 tentative map subdividing an existing 73.80 acre parcel into four lots of 5.13 acres, 5.47 acres, 5.14 acres and 47.48 acres and a 10.58 acre remainder parcel. The project site is located at 600 Rocks Road, approximately two miles east of downtown San Juan Batista. SBC file number 790. And could we have the staff presentation unless there are any disclosures that need to be done first? Okay, staff presentation, please. Thank you.
Okay. There we go. Okay, good evening, Chair and Commissioners, one more time. I'm Jonathan Levis, Associate Planner, San Bernadino County. I'm going to discuss PLN 210047, which is a minor subdivision at 600 Rocks Road. We're going to discuss project location, description, SEQA, land use consistency and staff recommendations. Okay, the site is approximately two miles west of downtown San Juan Batista. About a half mile to the west of the intersection of Rocks Road and Highway 156. The project is located in a rural area surrounded by mostly agricultural land uses and some rural housing in the vicinity. So the project proposes a subdivide an existing 73.80 acre or eight zero acre parcel into four parcels of 5.13, 5.47, 5.14 and 47.48 acres with a remainder parcel of 10.58 acres. Parcel one is undeveloped agricultural land, as is parcel two. And parcel three has one residence and is otherwise undeveloped agricultural land. Parcel four has one accessory structure, a barn, for agricultural use and is otherwise undeveloped agricultural land. And the remainder parcel is also undeveloped agricultural land. This project proposes no construction at this time. And it's worth noting that this subdivision changes little about the entitlements that would already be allowed under this current zoning, since it does allow this nearly the same degree of use with or without this subdivision. The image on screen shows an overall view of the site plan as submitted. This image on screen shows a close up of parcel four where the pond and barn are located. The image on screen shows a close up of the western side of the property and the residence is located in the middle of the image on parcel three. There are also three wells of on parcel four for parcels one, two, three and four, and the fourth well is on the remainder parcel. This image is the product site facing west towards El Con slough, which is 10 miles to the west of the project site. This is from the taken from the middle of parcel three. This image, the product site facing east towards San Juan Batista is from the middle of parcel three. You can also see the pond mentioned earlier there in the distance. This is the product site facing north towards Gilroy, approximately 10 miles north of the site, with the existing residents on parcel three in the foreground. This is a product site facing south towards Salinas from the middle of parcel three. And this parcel is under a a general plan designation. The goal of this designation is to uphold agricultural productivity, particularly on prime farmland encompassing various productive land types. Such as land types and uses such as crops, vineyards, grazing areas. And this designation permits agricultural support uses, essential facilities and one primary residential unit per lot, all in aid of preserving agricultural viability. The zoning is AP zoning and this zoning's goal is to facilitate diverse agricultural activities as articulated in the general plan. Which includes supporting agricultural related activities like vineyards, wineries and associated uses. Additionally, it allows for limited low density residential development while prioritizing the preservation of prime farmland. And this product site is consistent with both of its general plan and zoning designations. The project is further consistent with general plan policy LU 3.2 agricultural integrity and flexibility. This policy directs the county to protect the integrity of existing agricultural resources and provide both flexibility and economic viability for farming and ranching operations. The project's proposed lots will still allow for the existing agricultural operations to continue. The site will remain commercially viable for existing agricultural operations in addition to retaining sufficient lot area to be eligible for becoming agricultural preserves under San Bernadino County Code, which sets a minimum lot area standards for parcels to receive property tax deductions in exchange for agricultural productivity in accordance with the State of California's Williamson Act. As stated earlier, this project primarily revolves around delineating new property boundaries and does not include plans for new construction. The current zoning regulations already allow for nearly the same level of land use as what could occur with or without the subdivision. The project qualifies for an exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, based on SEQA guidelines, section 150061. It assures that the proposed subdivision will not significantly impact the environment, no ground disturbance or construction activities are proposed. And the project will not disrupt ecologically sensitive areas. The existing zoning regulations already permit similar land use activities. The project further qualifies for a SEQA class one categorical exemption that is section 15301. As it involves maintenance repair or minor alteration of existing infrastructure without expanding current use. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the staff report, review the attached draft resolution, including findings and conditions of approval. Receive public comment, adopt the resolution, including findings to prove minor subdivision parcel map, PLN 210047, subject to the conditions of approval found in the resolution. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission for staff?
Not this time, no.
Okay, does the applicant or the applicant's representative wish to say anything? Ms. Hall?
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and the applicant is also here if you have questions for them. We don't have a lot of questions about the conditions, except I do want to ask about condition 27. This is a condition calling for a fair share contribution. And I've asked this question, but to have a fair share contribution means that a benefit area has been established. I do not believe there is a benefit area for Rocks Road and I've asked if there is what resolution established it, I have not received that information. So if there's not a benefit area established, I don't believe you can charge a fair share contribution. So I'm asking this condition be removed.
I'm afraid that you've stumped me on this one. Robert, do you?
Steve, yes, I was going to ask Steve if he could come up and speak to it, please.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Steve Lu, Public Works Administrator. And per the applicant's request, engineer's request. We did a search for the resolution that would legally establish this benefit area. There were some drafts. There was some language, but Public Works, as of now, we cannot find a legally signed resolution that legally established the benefit district as of today. So I think it is fair to withdraw condition number 27. And we looked extensively and I won't bore you with all the details, but we cannot find that resolution. And so I think it's fair to remove condition number 27.
Okay, well, after we open public comment, if any, and after we decide if we're going to approve it, then we can talk about whether we're going to strike that or not. Are there questions from the, do you have something further to add then?
Um, no. Other than, I guess, actually my standard question regarding undergrounding utilities. While the applicant understands within the subdivision, there is a road within the subdivision, within the subdivision, the utilities will be underground. But undergrounding utilities along Rocks Road that already exists in the county is an expense that seems unwarranted for for homes. So we would like to have condition 38 differentiate between within the subdivision and the public road. It just says all proposed utilities within the subdivision and along peripheral streets. And I assume along peripheral streets is intended to mean Rocks Road. We're fine with within the subdivision. I don't have an issue with that. Because there there is a new road being built within the subdivision. So we wouldn't be adding poles. But the expensive undergrounding along Rocks Road will is can be pretty expensive. For again, what is not a major subdivision.
Okay. So I guess I'm still trying to wrap my head around what exactly is being proposed here. There's no new construction at this time, right?
There will have to be a road. Can we go back to the map? Oh. Okay, sorry. No, sorry.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay.
So this Blodgett Court is required to be built for access to the lots that are being created.
Uh huh.
So that does have to be built.
Okay.
I have a question. Is this going to be degress, negress on Blood Court or Blodgett Court? Is that going to be on to 156 or Rocks Road?
On to Rocks Road. It does not. It does not border 156.
And one of the maps that showed it at the corner 156 on 101, right?
Sorry. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's no access to 101.
But it but it does border along 101 and 156 on the backside, right? What they would consider their backside?
Not 156, though.
Yeah. It's 156 on 101, right there by the interchange. Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, I stand corrected that backside. I thought it was only along 101, but it is along there, but it's, that's not how they're accessing the property. They can't access from there, only Rocks Road.
Off of Rocks Road. Okay, thank you.
So is this basically across the street from the proposed Ranch 35? Which isn't, you know, I mean, we haven't approved that. It's it's gleam in the eye of the mining facility at this point, but I think Ranch 35 is like across 156 from from this.
To to a degree, the Manning family owns the property.
Yes, okay.
To the north.
I'm just trying to understand the topography, that's all. I'm not saying that's a problem. I'm just trying to understand where this is, that's all. Okay, thanks.
Um, and so those are my only two comments and then I'm here if you have questions for myself or the applicant.
Okay. Okay, so, all right. So I guess moving on into public comment, is there a public comment on this either in chambers or via Zoom?
Chair, there is no public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay. Commission deliberation.
I have a lot of concerns. This is, so when you're coming off of 101 and you're coming into people don't pay attention to the other side of the road. But when you're coming into San Juan, your first thing you see. It makes me nervous that the the larger parcel, parcel four. Unless it's unless there's an open space easement that I missed, I just see down the road. We're going to turn this into five acres all the way and welcome to San Bernadino County. I think Ranch Olarios was not thought out and I don't think I think we need to plan for the fact that if we allow this without open space on the remaining parcel that we're just going to end up with ranchettes as the introduction to our county. Morgan Hill Gilroy-esque. So and I may have missed, was there an open space easement offered for that remaining parcel?
The current remaining parcel, no, does not have it. There is one on the other side of Rocks Road. There is an agricultural easement there. And the the remainder parcel that is there currently could not be sold, financed or leased until it goes through conditions compliance. So that would come back to the.
And there's currently how many, how many parcels on this?
Proposed four plus remainder.
What what exists now?
Oh, one, one large parcel.
So we're going to go from one to five. And isn't that a major? And there's no environmental work done? And there's that pond there that I think is there year round and I would assume there's some sensitive habitat in this. The whole thing just really bothers me and then the water issue, there's arsenic and what else in the water? I just don't understand why we would do this and then be shocked down down the road when things go sideways. I just don't see this as a spot to further develop. That's my humble opinion.
I got a, has the water concern, has the water been tested? Where and where are they going to get the water for these parcels for the homes? The water's poisonous there, so what is proposed for for a water source eventually? You have none?
The the wells were reviewed by environmental health and they met the standards. But additionally, for to address the remainder parcel, remainder parcels for the subdivision map act are not counted as a parcel. So it still remains a minor. So they're they're using a way around it. It's now five parcels.
Has that pond been mitigated for a protected habitat?
I believe so, but there was, we could.
I didn't see it here. I looked around here real quick and I didn't see anything. Were they, were they going to mitigate for that, for that? Were they, were they gonna mitigate for that, for that runoff that comes down through there? And I've seen that pond come up pretty high. And I've seen ducks out there and, and I'm sure there's other salamanders and other species that need to be counted or taken care of.
And our grading ordinance also requires 50-foot setbacks from there. So they're not allowed to do work within 50 feet of any, any repairing corridor or wetland or anything like that.
That doesn't seem like enough.
Where's the part of the report that said there were two things in there that were above the high level? That the water wasn't safe, there was something in the report, now I, I can't find my note. That it said that there was arsenic and something else that were above the tolerable level. Which I thought was strange.
Oh, it's here, it's, it's under number 22.
Which page?
Uh, page 102.
102? Thank you.
102, condition 22. Percorate. Arsenic and percorate.
Oh, there it is, I missed my own note. Yeah, shouldn't that be a concern? I mean, unless they're getting water from Aromas or some other area that provides water that isn't tainted? I mean, that just seems illogical that, oh yeah, go ahead. Put a few more houses there and see what happens.
We, we had two Aromas Water District Commissioners here for the previous item. Vicky and Wayne.
I just, I'm just not seeing this. The water, the aesthetics, the open space issues.
These two, these two, these two are both carcinogens big time. Arsenic and percorate. Those are, those are both carcinogens, big time carcinogens, and it's not stating how high above, it just says above. Well, how by, how high above, is it, is it in a red flag area, is it in a yellow flag area? How high, how high is it? I mean, it's not stating what the parts per million are.
And those, those would be questions better answered by Environmental Health specifically, because they, they did take the review and the application for the local small water permit.
Hmm, having a hard time with this.
Yeah, then let's get them. If we're not gonna deny it, I'd like to continue and get, I'd like to see the results. I mean, this isn't planning. Like I said, we're not the building commission, we should be planning and thinking.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think I...
I agree with Commissioner Gibson.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just say I agree with Commissioner Gibson, that's all I said.
Yeah, I, I don't think I could vote to approve this. I, I certainly, I don't want to deny it, but I don't think I'm in a position to approve it. Not tonight.
I'd like to get some questions answered about the water, how high above the, the threshold it is. And I've got a concern with that pond. I wanna know what, what, what species of animals are in there that we have to worry about, I mean...
There should be environmental review, it's a sensitive area.
There you go, thank you. Environmental review, and then we'll talk.
Okay. So...
Yeah, absolutely, sure. Yeah, that's good.
Oh, sir, we need you to come to the podium.
Yes?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, if it's the applicant, please, you know, use, use what time you need.
Hi, Robert Blodgett. We, we did do tiger salamander, red-legged frog, and we already did all of those studies.
We did all of those studies.
Okay.
Already, and all of them passed. We wouldn't be here if the environmental report wasn't already pre-approved. We wouldn't even have taken this next step. Even the water went through Environmental Health and they said everything is fine. And that's when we decided to go ahead with this. So I, I don't understand why you don't necessarily have copies of all that information. I'm a little bit stymied because we've been doing this for years and it's, like I said, we had to wait until we got all of that information together to even present this. So I don't know where you're getting your information from right now, I'm very perplexed.
Yeah, the environmental health report said that, noted those two substances in the water, but they said that basically they passed it, they just said that we had to notice and tell any new owners, if there were new owners, if there were new houses, about that, and then they could treat the water. That's what's in the environmental report.
And that's a very common thing in San Benito County.
In some areas.
Well, that's what we were...
Then I'd like to see the environmental work and I'd like to hear from Environmental Health, because we don't have that, and we base information off of what we have. And unfortunately, I'm not gonna take your word for it that you've done it correctly.
And I don't understand why you don't have that.
Well, if we can, if we can obtain copies of that, then, you know, I mean, I would, that would certainly sway me towards not voting to deny, but rather voting to continue. And then if, if staff can spare up those copies and provide them to us, then...
And, and is there, if we're gonna, if we're gonna continue this awaiting those, I'd also like to see if we can discuss an open space easement. Because that's, that's, that's a huge deal for me.
I did have a question, Robert, sorry. Am I, okay.
Can I speak again?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, as far as this open space, the, the entire pond, which is two acres, is, is covered all the way around with, with an open space easement. Isn't I correct?
I'm talking about parcel four, the 46 acres. The entire 46 acres has an open space easement?
No, but there's part of it.
Well, yeah, I don't want part.
Is there a requirement by the county that we weren't made aware of, that there had to be a huge easement like that?
Well, we can, we can figure it out.
To me, like I said, we wouldn't be here unless we thought we were, we were doing the right thing.
No, the maps are... It looks like parcel four goes all the way around.
Which one is parcel four, is that the one to the top of the picture?
Well, it's the top, but I also think it goes down to the side.
Oh, you can't see it on TV?
Oh.
That's useless, sorry, I tried.
Okay.
It doesn't show up on this one.
Great. Do you have a pointer? Well, no, it wasn't really working. But, yeah, that whole pond area, and it's hard to distinguish up here, but that whole pond area is an easement. And non-buildable.
Does that go all the way around?
Yeah, see those lines?
Uh huh.
All the way from the freeway.
How far down to, south does it go? To the bottom of the picture, how far down does it go?
It looks, it looks like it goes right down to Rocks Road.
It goes across there, it's pretty much the upper...
I did, but I can't, I can't...
From, from the property line, it goes up and around to the pond?
Oh, it's, those, it's not down here, it's up there.
It's all around the pond and all the way to Highway 156 and then down to Rocks Road.
So then, what?
You can indicate maybe a little easier by using the mouse right here, and we can see that, oh no, we can't.
So what is this parcel?
Oh, never mind, sorry.
That is so small.
How do you do, I think there's a...
Yeah, it should be north.
I think there's a PowerPoint button.
Oh.
So is this? But is this only 101 or 156?
Parcel one, parcel two.
And I wanted to point another thing out, development of this property is based on water sources. And we drilled seven wells on that property in the past. And there's not going to be more, there may be water for maybe one or two more parcels, but not for another 10. There's no water, and we also, we're lacking perks. So it's very unlikely that there would be, it's impossible for that whole place to be developed in 500 parcels.
Like I said, I, I would like to see it in writing though. I would like to see it in writing. We don't, we don't take things on, on a verbal...
On the screen.
It's all in writing, it's all legal.
So this is a drainage easement all through here, this, and this, and this is the pond area. So essentially, from this upper quarter, upper third
Okay.
of what's shown is unbuildable.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but what, what is parcel four? Can you show me the outline of the entirety of parcel four? Not just the pond?
So parcel four goes from here
Oh.
Up.
All the way over.
All the way over.
But the road is that, and?
Rocks.
Okay, so that's 156.
No, that's Rocks Road.
That's Rocks Road.
That's Rocks Road, this map is a mess.
Rocks Road, yeah, Rocks Road is here.
What, what is the parcel that would be against 101?
This.
No. Nope, the other.
Here?
Down, 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 down. Down more? What is that parcel? That's also four, right? Okay, so I'm not completely nuts.
That's parcel, that's part of parcel four too.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm saying.
It goes all the way around.
We're gonna subdivide, I think parcel four should be protected as open space.
The whole parcel four?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, you have a scenic view shed into our county, you're the first parcel driving into our county. And I just cannot see, and I, I know you're saying that you can't build on it, okay, well then if you can't build on it...
I know, I said over there you can't build.
Ah, okay.
Here you can't build on it.
Then...
Can you build on it right there?
I think, I think, yeah. Yeah, so we're, we're piecemealing it to get around the major subdivision rules, that's my thought. So if you're not, I would say make parcel four open space and then we can, we can talk. That's my opinion.
Parcel four is a legitimate parcel, the remainder is the unbuildable parcel.
Parcel four is a legitimate parcel?
Yeah, there's four parcels and a remainder. And the remainder cannot be built on.
There's the remainder, right down there.
The remainder cannot be built on? I would rather parcel four not be built on.
Right on Rocks Road, the whole Rock, that, that part right there.
Why, why can't parcel one be built on?
Because it's the remainder.
No, not parcel one.
I mean, parcel one...
Parcel one and parcel two and parcel four can be built on. Parcel three has a house.
This is parcel one, this is parcel two, this would be the buildable area of parcel four. This would be the unbuildable area of parcel four, and then this is a remainder up here, which cannot be built on.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not inclined to go anywhere unless parcel four is open space designation.
You got four parcels here, one, two, three, four, and then it called, when you call remainder?
Yeah.
Why you call it remainder and not a parcel?
Yep.
Why is it a remainder? I've never, how you, how you designated that remainder?
You just approved a map with four parcels and a remainder in December. All right, this is not something new.
Every project is different though.
I, but the con, the concept of a remainder is not new, it's not even new, and like I said, you just approved one.
This is, this is a unique project.
And I'll tell you the reason why it was chosen as a remainder, we couldn't get perks on that property. That's the reason why. So it's unbuildable. That's why we chose to have the remainder years ago. We had that remainder, then when Roger Grizzly did this thing fifteen years ago. That was, that was the reason why we did the remainder there, it's unbuildable.
Well, I'll leave it to you, but with that open space, I'm gonna, I vote to deny it.
So you're, when, just so I'm clear, as I'm coming off of 101 either direction, but I'm coming off 101 safe from Salinas, and I'm driving off towards San Juan. That is parcel four.
Are you on 156 yet?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm turning, I'm going to Salinas, coming right up onto 156. And right there is parcel four where it's open and you see...
Yeah, you see the, the pond there on 156.
Okay.
That's parcel, that's the majority of parcel four.
Okay.
I would love to see the mitigation. Mitigation measures? For the environmental work that was supposedly done, where are the mitigation measures? Well, then what was it?
Well, I'd still like to see the water numbers.
All the, yeah, all the water numbers were submitted, all the wells were tested. There are primary levels that you have to meet, and there's secondary levels you have to meet. It's not unusual in this county for you to be high on arsenic, arsenic and, what was the other one, phosphate?
Percorate.
Percorate? That is not unusual at all, and then you have to treat it. But there's multiple wells in this county that have these...
Right.
Well, let's, let's see that information. And I also like to worry about the aesthetics, not commenting on that. To me, that's a big issue. Introduction to our county, that's like putting, putting a sewer pond at, at the beginning of Siena Gua by the bridge and saying, "Welcome to our wine country," I mean...
So do you want to continue?
I'd rather deny it myself, but I'm open to continuing it. I, I'm open to continuing it as well. But I'd like some information.
The thing about continuing it is normally when we continue something, it's, it's to, it's for the purpose of acquiring some critical piece of information that we don't have, and I, I'd need, need to know what, what is that critical piece of information?
I'd like to know more about the water, I'd like to know more about whether or not they would consider parcel four as open space to mitigate what they're doing to that aesthetics. Like to hear more about the roadway improvements. I think that is about...
Yeah, the open space is a huge... And I'm having an issue with more traffic on Rocks Road. For the Rocks Road improvement with that one-leng culvert box, maybe they should put something towards that eventually. Because, you know, like before, if we let something get by and then
Right, right.
then you know where we're at, Commissioner Way, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I hear you. I mean, if, if it's clear that, that, you know, the alternative to continuing is denial, I, I suspect that the applicant would probably prefer, I mean, I don't put words in their mouth obviously, but they'd probably prefer a continuance. But, um, um, yeah, I mean, I I probably couldn't vote to approve it tonight, so...
I, I think the environmental, including the aesthetics, is important.
Oh, I agree.
And, and to say it's been...
It was approved by Environmental Health. That's what I don't quite understand.
Why, why don't, why aren't you already privy that it's gone through this whole series?
And they approved it.
But, but there are other issues besides just, just, it's not just a matter of, does it check this box and this box and this box? There's a reason that there's a planning commission, and, and it isn't just a matter of, of, it's, it's not just a mechanical process. There, there are things that can be done administratively through the planning department, and there are things that have to come to the commission that require a judgment call. This is something that requires a judgment call, that requires thinking on the part of the commission as a whole, and requires our, our collective judgment, and this is one of those things that comes to us for a judgment call.
And like you, we depended on the experts of this county.
Of which we are five.
And I, I mean...
All we're missing is the report, the environmental report.
No, it's more than that, it's, it's more than that. And it's, it's also, you know, does this fit? What, what's best for the county? Is, is this something that the county will benefit from as a whole? So...
Housing is rural housing?
I'm sorry?
Two houses, three houses?
Commissioner, Commissioner?
Yes, but, but it's also a question of where and... Sure, sure, but, but where and, and under what circumstances? And all these things have to be weighed against each other.
Commissioner Way, may I?
Go ahead, please.
Maybe we should ask for an EIR, request an EIR.
Perhaps.
What is that?
Perhaps.
That's something to think about.
But, but meanwhile, meanwhile, I think a continuance might be the best, might be the best approach for now.
Oh, let's see, we're in Sarnet meeting, April.
It...
No. So they did a biological report, I think is what they're thinking about.
So are we?
We're, we're, we don't know if we're gonna have to wait one month or two months.
But not a SEQA report, a biological report.
For the record, staff and the applicant are having a discussion regarding if a report was completed. Can we please get an overview of your discussion?
Okay, thank you.
For the record, the project proposed as it stands here in front of you, staff provided an exemption. Some of the dis, some of the discussion that was happening was they were mentioning previous biological report that was done, but we were also asking if there was some other previous environmental document done. And the answer is that a biological report was done, but no other SEQA document was done. done.
Just to add more confusion, this subdivision was approved previously, um, ten years ago? And I cannot say whether or not there was an environmental document done with that previous approval. I suspect it was exempt as well. Um, but there's a possibility there was one there. But for this, middle, I think what the applicant was referring to was the biological report that was done.
So staff would like the commission to provide direction that are you stating that the exemption, you cannot support a SEQA exemption, and you would like a report done?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's the clarity we needed.
Cultural resources, aesthetics, everything, the whole nine yards.
Okay, so-
It's a unique piece of property that deserves some thought.
So then, staff could not, um, staff could return with a better timeline after looking at that, but we wouldn't be able to continue to the next meeting because we would need more time to prepare those documents.
I hope I live long enough to see it.
Well, uh, to the applicant, or to the applicant's representative, um, is there, what is, what is the urgency in this project? Is, is there an urgency involved here? Is there some specific, uh, action that, that the applicant is hoping to take in some reasonably short timeframe that, that this is really, really important to get done very, very quickly, or?
I have a heart condition, eighty.
Yes, I'm eighty-two, she's seventy, she's seventy-seven. We've been working on this for fifteen years.
Okay, well, I, I don't mean, I don't mean to suggest that we're gonna drag it out unnecessarily, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we, we understand that if there's something really, really pressing that we don't, you know?
Yes, she's, she's got ten stints in her heart.
There's more than that. It's, you know, it, it's just, it just seems like after all of this time and effort that we have put in, and tried to do everything under the formatting and the guidance of the county, getting all the tests that we were told were required, making sure that the property was designed by those environmental tests, where the water is, where the perks are, we knew that the only thing that we could do to divide this, even for our own children, is to make sure that we complied with everything. And we were thoughtful enough to leave the lake, the pond open, we were thoughtful enough to make sure that visually the property is still going to maintain its openness and beauty. We, I'm telling you, right now-
It's a four split.
This, this is not a big deal. It is for us, our family, and for whoever wanted to live comfortably in a five acre parcel. It's, it's rural, it's, we appreciate the beauty of San Benito County.
Okay.
And we appreciate you too.
Yeah.
I mean, we understand, I can see the passion, and, and we understand and appreciate that, but you, I hope you appreciate we have to look out for the county as well as you.
Absolutely, that's why we're here.
Okay.
And only here after we thought we had done everything we could please.
And, and-
Understand that, you know, we wanted to be fully focused on-
And, and if I could take just a tiny bit of the emotion out of it, maybe ratchet it down just a little bit, I think that it might be true that if, if, if you would agree to not develop the parcel four, make some sort of concession on that, then maybe that would satisfy our concern with respect to the, um, you know, um, with respect to the scenery in that area. That seems to be the main stumbling block, I think, in, in large part. I mean, the water is, is an issue, but, but I think a, a large stumbling block is, is the scenery and the, uh, the issue of, you know, the introduction to our county, so that would go a long ways.
You have a unique piece of property.
Exactly.
Yeah, but you're talking about over sixty percent of the property, uh, would be, you're talking about, uh, three fives, no, you're talking about three fives, that's fifteen into seventy-two, so you're actually talking about having unbuildable, probably seventy or eighty percent of the property is what you're talking about right now.
But if it really is-
We only want two more houses or three more houses, that's all we want. We don't, we don't want twenty houses, we couldn't do them anyway. There's no, there's no percolation, there's no more water, so.
Okay, well, your choice.
I'm not saying that we couldn't dedicate some of that, but certainly not eighty percent of the property.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Would you like to continue this so we could work with the applicant on some of these items?
Continue to date certain, or?
Um, we, so, uh, through the chair?
Yes.
Um, I think we've heard tonight, um, some of the different concerns. Are you still asking, are you still denying the request of, or denying the SEQA exemption? Or are we?
Yes.
Then staff will work with the applicant and we will review, um, when we could bring back, um, a document that we could report out at our next meeting.
Okay, all right, so, so we'll look forward to hearing this again, or hearing about this again at the next meeting. Okay, which is April sixteenth?
April sixteenth.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Will we have more information about the water? And what, what, if anything, can be done to make it?
The, the SEQA review would also cover water as well.
Okay.
So there would be a more extensive research on that as well.
Yeah, and we could provide, uh, at least a timeline of when, um, that SEQA document could be completed and, uh, brought back to the commission.
Okay, all right, so we need some sort of a motion?
Yeah, motion to continue, uh, the item to a date certain, but to bring back, uh, an update of a timeline, uh, at our next meeting.
Okay, may I have such a motion?
So moved.
I'd like to make a motion to continue then, using her wording.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Thank you. And I believe that was our last item for tonight, so I think-
Commissioner announcements.
Oh, Commissioner announcements, yes, I have a Commissioner announcement, I believe. I think I have two, in fact, and I need to refer to my notes here. Um, so, one moment. Yes, um, first off, at the last meeting, I appointed myself and Commissioner Ringhaden to the homeless task force. The homeless task force does not exist. So, um, that appointment is null and void, so sorry about that. And the other announcement is, hopefully everybody knows about and/or has already completed, I have not yet, the Form 700, which is the financial disclosure that everybody has to do by April first. If you do not do it by April first, then the fines are ten dollars per day, and that